October 20 meeting, 2020. It is 6:34 PM. We will be doing this meeting remotely as we've been doing most of our, all of our meetings recently. And in order to, to do that, there are, there are certain things that, that we need to do to make ourselves legal under the right to know law. So I will read the, the statement here. As Chair of the Kingston Planning Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to emergent executive order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing into the following phone number, area code 929-205-6099, and using the meeting ID 816-9547-1927. Or by clicking on the following website address, and it's a, it's a, it's a very long one, but it can be found on the second page of the planning board's agenda for tonight, which can also be found on the town's website at kingstonnh.org. And going to the planning board page and you can find the agenda and the link to join the Zoom meeting there. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the board at www.kingstonnh.org. If anyone has a problem, please call 642-3342, extension six, or email pb@kingstonnh.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. We'll start by taking roll call attendance, and when each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you for the meeting and, which is required under the right to know law. Okay. All right, Ellen, could you start by calling the roll and we'll, we'll do that part of it?
I'm muted. Glenn Copeland?
Present and alone?
Richard Wilson?
Present, alone.
Chris Bashaw?
Present, home alone.
Robin Dugway?
Present, alone.
Peter Coffin?
Present, alone.
And Lynn Merrill?
Present, alone.
And I haven't seen Peter yet, is that correct? Glenn's nodding, he'd be the other one, so, okay.
You don't see him waiting in the waiting room, Glenn? Okay, all right. Well, in the mean, that leaves us, that leaves us with a, a board seat open, at least for the time being. So Ellen is one of our alternates, and so Ellen, you, you'll sit in Peter's place until such time as he would show up.
I don't know.
So we will have seven, seven voting members. We also have with us-
It wasn't coming out of my calendar this time, it was coming out of there.
All right. Would, would whoever's speaking now, would you please put yourself on mute? Susan, is that you?
Yes, I'm trying. I'm on a new computer and it's confusing me. Oh, I see it, never mind, I got it, sorry.
Thank, thank you. And Joan, if you're listening, if you could mute yourself as well, that would be very helpful. Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we, in addition to our board members, we have Glenn Greenwood, our town planner, and we have Dennis Quintal, our town engineer. So I'm going to introduce the first hearing, we have two of them tonight, both of which are continuances from, from previous meetings. And just to explain for members of the public, at the beginning of each one of these, we'll, we'll, we'll go through the legal noticing of it to explain what the, what the application is. The, the applicant will then be given an opportunity to speak to the board and to the public listening. The board will then enter discussion. We will go through any comments from town engineer, town planner, and town departments. And once, once that has occurred, we will open it up for public comment, and at that point, if you wish to speak, you should send a, a note into the chat function of Zoom, and Glenn Greenwood will be monitoring that, and he can then recognize you and, and will, will, will get you into, to ask your question or make your comment. But that will be, that'll be a little ways into the, into the process, so. All right, so the first hearing, and it is, oh, it's not quite 6:45 yet. How about if we, as a board, just jump down to other business and maybe we can take care of the, we have two sets of minutes, September 15th and September 29th. Is, is the board ready to act on those?
I'll move, this is Peter Coffin, I'll move that we accept both sets of minutes as presented.
Peter, Peter, I'd, I'd like to do them one at a time, please.
Okay, um, well, September 15th, I'll move those be adopted as written, if there's no alterations needed.
Motion by Peter Coffin for September 15th minutes.
Second.
Second by Richard Wilson. Discussion on those minutes, September 15th. Any corrections or changes, adjustments, questions? Lynn, were you trying to say something?
Yes, please give me just a minute. I'm trying to find the placement, the minutes.
Towards the end, Lynn, I think, if it's the correspondence one.
Correct. So in correspondence, we had-
Lynn? Lynn, is there a way you can get closer to your mic?
Maybe, this is a new computer too.
Oh, okay.
Working on it.
It, it's just, your, your, your volume is a little bit soft.
Okay, I'll try to speak up a little bit.
Okay, that's better.
During, um, we were talking about correspondence. We had talked about, um, the auto dealer plates, but we never identified the location of that, it was HAA Auto Repair and Nationwide Recovery Services. So I think, um, if we're going to be talking about a letter or something, the minutes should reflect the company that we were discussing. So I think we need to add those to the minutes.
So the address of the location, right?
Um, the, the name of the company at the location.
Lynn had already commented to me about this, so I went in and found the correct names, so that when Lynn wanted to add that tonight, we'd know what we were talking about, we could go from there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it was just under all that correspondence we went through, and there was something having to do with auto dealer plates, and we needed to check something. And I can't find it in my minutes, but I just think that we needed to identify the company that we were talking about, that's all.
Yeah, it's on page two.
Oh.
Near the top. We, we went to other business while waiting for the internet.
There we go. Location, so it's the second bullet point with auto dealership licensing. So in, in reference to that, I just thought we should identify the company, that'll, that's all.
Okay. Anything else? All right. So then the, now-
I'll, I'll adjust the nominee, the motion to allow for the amended, amending to adjust that to show the name of the company in the auto dealership plates.
Okay. All right, so the motioner and the seconder have, have modified the motion, so then the motion would be to approve the September 15 minutes as, as amended. Ellen, would you please call the roll on that one?
Oh, sure. Glenn Copeland?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
Robin Dugway?
Yes.
Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Peter Baiki?
Yes.
Okay, so Peter Baiki has joined us, Ellen, you're, you're, you're off the hook now. So all of our regular members are now present and sitting. Pete, Peter, we went through the, we went through the roll call earlier, could you just identify, or state your presence and whether you're alone or with somebody?
Peter Baiki, I am present.
Okay, thank you. All right, how about the September 29th minutes?
Yeah, I'll move those. Amending any amendments they want to make, but as written.
Motion by Peter Coffin.
Second.
Second by Richard Wilson. Discussion on these minutes. Questions, adjustments? I don't see anything, all right, so we'll, we'll call the roll on this one as well, Ellen?
Glenn Copeland?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Robin Dugway?
Yes.
Peter Baiki?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So just for the record, the vote on both September 15th and September 29th minutes were, were unanimous. Okay. All right, it's now 6:45, we can start the first hearing. This is for 266 Route 125 LLC, the address is 266 Route 125 in Kingston. It's Tax Map R41 Lot 17-1. And the legal notice reads that the planning board will be reviewing the following multiple proposals for this application. First subdivision, the proposal is to subdivide one lot into four lots with appropriate cross easements. Two, a site plan for a new 800,000 square foot warehouse distribution facility, and the redevelopment of an existing warehouse distribution facility and office. And three, a conditional use permit as requested by the applicant. All right. Okay, so this is the, this is the second hearing, the first one was, was last month. And Mr. Dubay is with us, and I believe some of your supporting folks are on the call as well, I see. I did see Mr. Pernah somewhere on there. I see Tim Stone is here. Anybody else, Carl, that you can recognize? Oh, there's Mr.-
Do, do you, do you hear me?
I do.
Good evening, uh, my name is Carl Dubay, and also, I believe Morgan Hollis is on, I see his M-A-H initials.
Oh, okay.
He must be from his, going from his office, and I believe, yes, sir, Mr. Chair, Steve Pernah was here, I thought I saw him.
He, he is. He is, he's there, his video's on.
Okay. And I, yeah, and you mentioned, uh, Tim Stone also, our scientist.
Yep.
Uh, so, thank you, Mr. Chair, so, I just want to give you just an update from our perspective, and I'm sure Glenn and Dennis would chime in as needed, just going to give you a brief summary of where we are. Uh, and we had a very good TRC work session last week. Uh, we, rolling before that, we got a lot of planned revisions completed. And we also prepared a supplemental drainage analysis, basically taking the project through a, a stress test, as, as we would call it, on different permutations of storm events and, and that type of thing that Mr. Quintal was looking for, we submitted that. We submitted a core, I would call a core set of plans that basically addressed the, the logistics of the review comments. Uh, that was the first step in terms of sequencing through the, the project in terms of review comments, and uh, we feel very good about that. Uh, I still think we have a little bit of work left to do on, on some of the qualitative items that Dennis was looking for, but the quantitative items, the logistics, the technical items, uh, we have a good handle on, I believe. I need to get to Dennis and Glenn some more information to round out that packet, so they don't have to be hunting around, you know, over 100 sheets of pages, but it, it's all in there on those packets. Uh, we worked hard to do that, and I thank the board for allowing us the short time, and we did deliver it, got it done. Uh, thank you for, for getting that short timeframe allowance for us to do that. So there were a lot of things there that embedded in those comments that we took care of, uh, but I think that Glenn and Dennis probably haven't had a chance to get their arms around it, but at least we got it done, and it gave us a target to get stuff done. Um, we also had test bits done today that were witnessed by RCCD with Gulf Environmental Science, and Doug from our office was there as well, those went fine. We're going to now be recalibrating that data into our set so that Mr. Quintal can review all that as well, but there, there won't be any issues. As a matter of fact, we just discovered even more alternative backups to the systems that we would need if, if we, if we had to go there, but we, we're, the site is a very, very good site for all of that. Um, what I'd like to do, Mr. Chair, if I can, is just in summary fashion, just hand, hand it over to Tim Stone, and he can give you a quick summary of what he's been working on for the hydro study, and also a quick summary from Mr. Pernah and what he's been handling on the traffic study. Uh, we did get some correspondence in from DOT and Concord. It was actually good because there were only three items, and he can explain that in, in summary fashion. And in terms of our, our summary of where we are technically and everything, uh, then we would like to hand it back to you, and, you know, we can address any questions you would have, anything at all, any detail, but we just want to give you a summary report going through some of the team members, if that's okay.
That's fine.
So, uh, Tim, are you, are you there?
Yep, I'm here, can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay, good. Um, Tim Stone with Stonehill Environmental, um, the lead on the hydrogeologic investigation in accordance with the Act for Protection District Ordinance. Uh, we've installed seven monitoring wells and one pezometer, one of the wells is a couplet, shallow and deep. Uh, the geol- geological conditions were really consistent throughout the site, as we expected, mostly nice, fine sands with silt. Depth of groundwater was pretty deep, as we anticipated also, you know, greater than 15 feet, 20 feet in some areas. Groundwater flow, we're collecting rounds of water levels, groundwater flow is radial from the site as expected to the west, northwest, and north, northeast, as you may recall, looking at the figure. The Little River wraps around the, the property flowing from the south to the north, and then it takes a bend to the east, and then under Route 125. So so far, everything is consistent with what we anticipated, which is encouraging, and it will allow us to do our nitrate loading calculations, and I think feel very confident in the direction of the, of the, of the effluent from the leach fields. Um, as mentioned previously, the intention is to do advanced treatment because of the proximity to the Little River. Uh, we have analytical results, we've sampled the wells for some general chemistry, chloride, nitrates, other general chemistry parameters and field parameters, and we expect those results back any day. So our intention is to have the, the plan submitted in time for the next uh, planning board meeting, and to give Dan and Tresslow enough time to review it and comment for the next meeting, and we can take questions when, if anyone has any one appropriate.
Okay, thanks, Tim, and he did mention, one of Dennis's comments was a, a design adjustment to our approach on the septic system, so we are actually, as Tim mentioned, putting in the advanced active treatment on those systems. And that is underway right now, and we've also equalized the flow, so, so we're collecting flows around the big building and going to an advanced treatment system, a fireclear AquaPoint, AquaPoint fireclear system, and then distributing from there, so that, that'll work really, really well, and, and Dennis has come up with a lot of good suggestions, and we're actively proceeding on all of them, and, and it's coming out really, really well. Also, Mr. Pernah, I thought I saw you here somewhere. He's here.
I'm here, Carl.
Okay, can, can you give, give everybody a summary of where you are?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Stephen Pernah with Pernah and Company. Our office prepared the traffic impact and site access study for the applicant on this project. And the study has been submitted to the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, and I have two new things to report tonight. Uh, one is, today we received, uh, review comments from the Bureau of Traffic concerning our traffic study. And as Carl mentioned, they had three items on their list. Uh, and basically, we'll prepare a response memo after speaking with them. The first item, they, they had questions about our no build traffic projections for the year 2032. I think I know where the confusion may lie, and we can address that. The second point that they brought out is that our study did not include the development pad site that's out front. And that's true, and that's because it's not being proposed now. But back at the time of the scope meeting, when that was originally held, that was an item of discussion. And as they pointed out, that if it's not being proposed now, it would obviously be a whole new application for whoever were to develop that site, and quite frankly, would require a whole new traffic study. So anyway, the future pad is not proposed now, and that's why it's not in our study. And the last item, uh, they asked us to basically add a column to our signalized intersection analysis. What we did in our report is analyze a no build case, and then a build case with everything in full operation. And we did that, uh, while optimizing the cycle lengths. So they've asked us to do an additional analysis of what would happen if we didn't optimize the cycle lengths. So like I say, that will be another column in the report, but it really does not change anything in terms of the mitigation that we've recommended. And then the second point, I, new information that I wanted to share with the board is that we're going to be meeting with your town consultant, T.F. Moran. We're going to meet with them and the police chief and Mr. Greenwood, I understand, sometime on Monday. So we'll be able to see what questions they may have, and we'll address them as well. So things are moving along well from our perspective, and that's my update for tonight.
Thank you, thank you. And, and Mr. Chair, I, I would like to just give you one type of information, one, one plan, if I could just share the screen on one item that we're going to be getting into with staff and the board. Um, on the conditional use permits, uh, there was a request to, you know, to get more data for, for example, for the CUP for the 100-foot wetland buffer. So we've been working hard at that as well, and if it's okay, I can share a screen with just one plan?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. All right, so hopefully you can see this, my screen. And-
Yep.
What we've done is we've included, I'll go full screen here. So, uh, this is just one example of the additional information we provided in the extra packet. Uh, there was some concern about the 100-foot wetland buffer, and they, they, basically it was asked on the 100-foot wetland buffer around the Little River, uh, what's going on with it? What, you know, do, do some, do a little plan, do the calculations, and show what is happening with an inventory of the entire 100-foot buffer. And so we did that, and those plans are available, but it's just, here's a, here's actually a summary of that. And we're proud to be able to say that the 100-foot buffer, you may or may not be able to see this, but in green, uh, we split this up in terms of the numbers, rough numbers in terms of square footage of what's happening with that buffer. And 85% of that buffer is left totally undisturbed. Uh, so of the 100-foot buffer, 85%, we're going to leave it just the way it is, totally natural, not touching it. And another 8% of the buffer would be temporarily graded for some of the outlets and the treatment outlets. And, uh, we've already integrated some of the things that the town engineer asked us to do as well for level spreaders and some other things, we're doing for techniques, treating, you know, treatment units on, on these as well. Uh, but in the, in the buffer, uh, we have about 8%, which we're actually temporarily grading and then renaturalizing, and we won't have to get in there again. Uh, so, over 90% of that buffer is actually retained, and it does be grown back in. Uh, there's also not another 5%, actually about 6% of the buffer is already an existing building or small lawn areas that are adjacent to an existing building. And so by the time we're done, there's about 90, 94% of this 100-foot buffer is, is being protected essentially. And of the existing building, Glenn asked us to just take a few pictures, just to get us calibrated. Here's, here's a picture of the existing office building. And we're going to be upgrading the parking lot in, in front of the building. And around the, the backside of the building, this is part of the buffer, uh, 100-foot wetland buffer on that existing brick building that we're going to be retaining. There, there's little lawn areas and a piece of the building that's in it, existing, non-conforming. Uh, this is a piece of the office building connector, connector that we're going to be taking away. Uh, here's the existing warehouse. Uh, in the back of the warehouse, there's a pavement that almost wraps around, we're going to finish that wraparound for fire access, but there's some parking areas, a little piece of pavement in here, and some uh, grass that's in the buffer that we're going to retain, we're actually going to improve the drainage over here on this side, so the treatment will be improved. There's some areas of lawn, back of the building, the existing building. So tho- those are the things we're talking about on that, uh, but then going back to, and just-
So need to watch.
Uh, so this buffer, 96%, 94% is, is, is what it is, it's already there, protecting, revegetating. Uh, and there's one very small area here where the driveway is going through the buffer, and that's going to be gated with electronic systems for no trucks. Uh, the fire department, police department would have electronic pass keys to that and knockbox. Uh, and employees, certain employees of the, the new building would have access to that as well. Uh, but it's not a free-for-all by any means, and that's a, a, an access drive that wraps around for emergency access and, and a little bit of employee use, but not a lot, and we talked about that the last hearing. But that, that piece, uh, uh, of pavement, proposed pavement is, is, is annotated here, it's 6,000 square feet of pavement. Um, and the buffer is 700,000 square feet, so that's less than 1% of the buffer, and, but everything would be treated, and everything else would be re, revegetated and naturalized. So that's just one example of several that staff and engineering have been asking- Staff and engineering have been asking us to summarize as we move towards. Solidifying conditional use permit criteria. So we are, this is where we are right now and working through this because we had to get all the logistics, all the bones of this, all the design done. That would meet AOT criteria and everything else first, but this is all working. In our opinion, we we believe it is working very well. So with that, I mean, we can go on and on about all sorts of fun details if you'd like, but I'd like to basically. Stop and hand it hand it back over to the chair and I'll I'll release my screen.
Okay, Carl. Okay, Mr. Dubay, thank you. All right, we have, we have a number of things here. We have some department comments. We have, we have a couple of. A couple of letters from Dennis. We don't have a comment sheet from Glenn, but we do have his. His notes from the technical review committee meeting which took place recently. And before we started this meeting, I thought that it might be good if if Glenn would 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 at least summarize. The the high points of that TRC meeting. Not so much for the board because the board has already received it and presumably read it. But but there are a number of, a number of folks from the public who are on the call, so. Glenn, if 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 you're okay with doing that, maybe this would be a good time for that.
Terrific. Yes, the TRC meeting was held on Thursday afternoon in the town hall. Representatives from the town included three representatives from the Kingston Fire Department. Two from the Highway Department, the police chief was there representing the police department. I was there, Dennis was there as the town engineer. I mean, Nathan was there representing the Conservation Commission. And members of the design team included Carl Dubay and the applicant John Walters was also in attendance. Number of topics. Were undertaken and spoke about as Carl just mentioned, the Conservation Commission was interested in. A better understanding of the impacts to the wetlands and so that sheet fifty-nine A that Carl just showed from the. The plan, the overall plan set was a new addition to the plan set that tries to. As clearly as possible detail the wetland impacts. Mr. Dubay also indicated that the the project includes a wetlands mitigation. Fee to the the aquatic. Resources. Fund that exists through DES and so they are being required to put money in that fund. To augment the wetlands protections either in town or in the region. We had comment from the town. Police chief basically asking that all efforts that are possible be taken to separate the traffic. That's going into the site between standard vehicles and the larger semi trucks. His interest is in keeping those two. Those two vehicle populations separate because when they come together, there's greater safety issues that are raised and so. The traffic study is going to delve into that topic and that will be something that I believe we speak about at length. Mr. Pernod mentioned next Monday. There was talk about fencing on that's being proposed on site and the town engineer. Offered that perhaps the fencing could have some breaks in it. And we can talk about this at length beyond, but there were questions that the areas that were going to have fencing. Along the northwest boundary, along a couple of the Butters properties. That they would, that would have negative impacts on wildlife, central for wildlife migration. And so Dennis indicated that. There could be gaps left in the stockade fencing and it could be done in a way that allows the stockade fencing to maintain its. Buffering aspect, but also there could be offset segments. There could be wildlife migration ability. Well. Dennis did reiterate his concern that he's voiced throughout this process. That he's encouraging the development team to do as much as possible. To handle the the high degree of stormwater runoff that is going to be. Created on this site because of that very large building. And I think that the design team has been very responsive to trying to respond to Dennis's. Comments and I think that there will be refinements on the plan to do that. And finally, there was some discussion about the ability for natural gas to be. Served at that site, but it seemed like perhaps the the closest inches of natural gas are still. Are feel to be liable for. Fire department's fire consultant has not done their report on on the project, so. Although he was in attendance, Mr. Sullivan was there and heard the presentations. It heard the questions from various folks about the project. He has not heard his report. For fire safety measures for the, so that will be. That's that's basically the highlights of the TRC meeting that place on Thursday.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Glenn. While you've got the mic, are there any other comments you'd like to make at this time?
No, I'm very interested in in sitting down and having the first discussion with the with our consult, our traffic consultant. Of the the information that's been presented so far and like we've said, that will happen on Monday.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, Dennis, would you care to? Comment, I don't know how much, I don't know if you want to walk through these comments as you normally do or if.
Well, well, I had fifty comments before, over fifty percent of them were addressed. I could probably go through them quickly for the benefit of some of the people who didn't hear my review the first time. And there are a few additional comments, so if that's okay with you, I'll proceed.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so my second comment was about the wetland note and notes that should include stamps and signatures of the wetland. Soil scientists, that's stamping the plans is is what I mean by that. Comment number five is about article two oh one four G three B. That is about the conditional use requirements that the use will not cause a significant reduction in the long term water volume. Contained in the aquifer or in storage capacity of the aquifer. This what a stormwater analysis shows significant increases in volume of stormwater runoff. Reducing the groundwater recharge and and just like Kyle said, he's working on that and based on the testing that he talked about today. I'm sure they'll they'll be looking at trying to mitigate. The the volume of runoff. So back to my comment number ten was again noted about the CUP. Criteria three, it says no damage to spawning grounds and other wildlife habitat. There is a significant disturbance in wildlife habitat in the shoreline protection district on this site. That is proposed for development. Further evidence must be provided for this and other statements to verify compliance and meeting the authority and purpose of the. Shoreline Protection Ordinance. Comment number twelve, sheet three. Nine oh four fifteen B one, proposed parking requirements are not met and must show that they are significantly adequate. For this development according to nine oh two fifteen B eleven. And I think that Kyle mentioned that at at the first meeting somewhat. But I I'm not sure it was a hundred percent accepted by the planning board, but that's, I just left it in there for. For for the planning board not to forget to look at that and make sure that that's okay. A comment number fifteen on on sheet thirty-one, the grading and drainage plan. The outlet, the wet pond on the the outlet to the wet pond on the southeast corner of the lot. This is right, right near one twenty-five. It shows that the proposed pond water, it's going to be a a wet pond. So there's going to be water standing there. That water elevation is one twenty-eight, the eight feet lower than the existing. A seasonal water table according to the test pit results. Perhaps the vegetation on the nearby property will be affected by this action. Show plan, design and grading for the end of the drainage because it kind of goes off the page. It goes into the town, the state right of way and down the edge of their state right of way and and where it goes, I assume it goes. Back into your Butters property, but I'm not sure it doesn't show where it goes. So if that could be shown on a on a detail. That would be certainly helpful. A comment number seventeen on sheet thirty-one shows a Gabian snow wall and drainage pipe like I was just talking about for the surface water runoff. From the subject property onto the state right of way until one twenty-five and then flows subtly discharging onto the Butters lot seventeen twelve. Like I said, I I assume it goes onto onto that lot. Easement notation should be provided. Show for results, the rights for the proposed development and acceptable by DOT to to have that action done. Comment number twenty, sheet thirty-three, ripped out rap area should be shown on the outlet of flat inch. Flat end section A six, which again, that was probably just a little, a little look, that's just a drafting thing that's easy to fix. Number twenty-one, sheet thirty-four, the sheet shows the proposed development within the hundred foot buffer. Wetland buffer, shoreline buffer and the fifty foot natural vegetated buffer to the butter. Perhaps the applicant can provide mitigation to equal a benefit to disturb. To disturbance of the existing wildlife in this area. Also provide notation for compliance with the buffer to the butter. To a butter or note a waiver on on the plan because it's supposed to be a natural vegetated buffer and what they're proposing, the swales. And then replanting it afterwards. So I'm not how the sure how the board looks at that, but I I left that comment in there as as well. Number twenty-seven, sheet fifty-six, the septic overview. Proposed warehouse distribution facility calculation show that wastewater outlets from the from one building. Each proposed to equal twenty-five percent of the total project flow from the building. And so one septic system is going to one corner of the building, now it's going to another corner of the building, now it's going to another four corners, so. My question is, how how in the operation of the facility are they going to be able to control twenty-five percent of the old? All the people to go to one section when they use the facilities. And 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 that's a management thing, but I think it's important that each leach field that doesn't get, each septic system doesn't get overused. Comment number twenty-nine, sheet fifty-seven, the shoreline area summary, the impervious area summary on the shoreline track. Shows for the proposed development of the three lots in the shoreline area, there's sixteen percent impervious. However, newly created lot seventeen one one will have over forty-seven percent impervious. And lot seventeen one dash two will have over twenty-six impervious. Article two oh five four B, the maximum lot coverage is twenty percent. So will a variance be required to create lots that have greater than twenty percent? That's my question. So that's just an answer for them to come up with for that. Comment number thirty-one, sheet D four. See note two has been removed. It's a reference to a note two that doesn't exist, I don't believe. But there's also a reference to a note seven that I don't believe is there either, so that's something to check, check out. That's on the on the detail, one of the detail sheets D four. Comment number thirty-two. The outlet control structure D one specifications don't match those provided in the calculations. Provide invert out from. Detention basin and the outlet structure D one and H one. Comment number thirty-eight, article nine oh four five G thirteen, list all waivers granted on the plan. There are any. Thirty-nine, article nine oh four five G fourteen, list all state approvals obtained obtained with dates. Number forty-one, comment, article nine oh four thirteen, it should be. It should be determined which sheets of the plan set will be recorded. A note needs to be added to the recorded sheet that remaining sheets are on file at the town. I I'd like to see if what the registry would say if you brought in this full set of plans for recording, see what. See what the registry would say about that, but I'm sure we don't need to record all the sheets. Comment number forty forty-two, article nine oh five fourteen C twenty-four requires that each lot provide a four thousand square foot area. For wastewater systems on each lot. Within that area, two soil test pits must be provided. And witnessed by the town RCCD, I guess. So I know other times the town has accepted full septic plans in in lieu of showing a four. Four thousand square foot area, but that's something you, you know, I'm sure Kyle will take take a look at and and see if he can one way or another show that. Number forty-three, stormwater management report narrative states that the stormwater drainage mitigation was designed in accordance with NHDES current minimum. Requirements. That goal is to provide calculations for post-development rate of runoff to be equal or less than pre-development. This design results show achieving that goal. In most cases, this would satisfy the town reviews. Today, we understand there have been and will be changes to global climate which affects rainfall. Perhaps regulations will soon need to be adjusted accordingly. Town must consider long term impacts of all the proposed developments in order to meet the current federal MS four requirements. This is a large single development which impacts the natural physical features and wildlife habitat in this part of town. An important, important function of these features is to filter stormwater, protecting the quality and quantity. Of the town aquifer zone. Just as important is protecting the quality and quantity of the runoff downstream to a Butters and drinking water supplies. Although this design objective is to meet the minimum requirements, perhaps additional mitigation should be required. Calculations show that the volume of stormwater runoff, not the rate, the volume, the amount of water running off into Little River. Then increase offsite and then offsite increases forty-seven percent for the two year event. Which is amounts to almost eight hundred thousand gallons for a two year event storm. And for a fifty year storm is twenty-three percent, over two million gallons leave the site. Now, once it leaves the site, perhaps some of it will get back into the aquifer. But maybe a lot of it will not wind up in the Exeter River and be lost from the aquifer. This is a significant volume of water that is not being conveyed to the aquifer. What what is that impact to the aquifer and what is that impact downstream with this increased volume? I believe more fill infiltration is needed. And and perhaps Dana Trusswell will also chime in on on this factor as well. And and also the additional work that Kyle's going to be doing on on amending the plants, so. Back to comment number forty-six, infiltration feasibility report is provided. The contractor shall ensure two feet of proposed material below the infiltration systems meet a rate of ten minutes per. Ten inches per hour and this testing must be witnessed by and the results sent to the town. Comment forty-seven, article nine oh four eleven and twelve, bond is required for engineering inspections of the onsite improvements. Forty-eight, section nine oh seven three eight three, performance guarantee amount is required to be finalized prior to approval. And forty-nine, section nine oh seven point four A, performance guarantee must be in place prior to. Construction on the site. Number fifty, nine oh eight sixteen six A, the operation and maintenance procedure. Procedures for stormwater management systems document must be recorded. I get a few additional comments based on the revised plans that were sent. Sheet D one shows. Sheet D one shows, now shows a detail for the Vortex one thousand as additional treatment for stormwater runoff. Invert specifications and pipe sizes should be provided for this, for this detail, which the detail is there, which is a good thing to have, which is something that I kind of recommended. But a little bit more detail on, on the piping for that, for that detail should be shown. Number fifty-two, the additional vortex stormwater treatment is shown, is not shown for detention systems PC two, PE two, or PH. There may be a reason for that, but I just noted that they, they weren't there. My last comment, number fifty-three says, show the location and dimensions for overflow spillways in the detention basins as notated on, noted on detail number, sheet number three. So there's a detail for an overflow spillway, but it's not shown on the plan set, which they should be shown where those spillways are going to go on the detention basins. And the diameter, the lengths, widths, and whatnot, elevations also should be shown. So those are the comments that I have, and again, I know, I know they're working on them. There's a lot of them that can be fixed fairly easily. There's still a few that bother me that I don't, I don't believe that they've been answered significantly enough for, for any type of saying that there could be any type of conditions for approval based on these comments. So perhaps maybe the next set will, will answer a lot of these questions and be more of a checkoff item for us. So with that, thank you, and I'll leave it for somebody else to continue on.
Okay, Dennis, thank you. Carl, rather, rather than asking you to now respond to all of these, I assume that that you're aware of these, that you have a copy of this, and that when it comes time to submit the next set of plans, you will be addressing these. You're muted there, Carl.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to point out a couple of things. Actually, this is, it's good news. Some of the things that Dennis is pointing out is, and we'll, we'll point into key sheets that Dennis and Glenn were looking for. There's some, some of the notes we did add to the plans that, actually, the notes he was asking for did that. We just have to show them where they are because it's, you know, a hundred sheets. There, I'll give an example, on the septic systems, his comments were well taken, and actually, we already took care of those on the packets. We are collecting all of the septic flows and pumping them to one central location to be treated. Each one of those flows, I think Dennis would say that we still have to assume that it's twenty-five percent of the flow coming out of the building. But what we're adding are extra Presby tanks, and we're not taking credit for that passive treatment at all. But we're going to be adding more tanks for that, just in case there was an imbalance of flow coming out of the building. And then we all bring all that flow to the central treatment plant to be pumped equally to the equal-sized beds that we have. So I understand where he's coming from on that, and we're actually adding more details to that to accommodate those fluctuations. On the parking, I'd like to just leave a couple of things with the board on that, and it's actually shown on sheet three, but I don't need to bring it up for you, but I just wanted to give you a sense of calibration on the parking, if I may. And what we did was we compared the parking requirements of other towns with big warehouse distribution-type facilities and their requirements as well. And just did a gut check on this because, you know, you don't see too many of these larger warehouses. And how are they handling parking? And so we added that, that data to the plans on the parking notes, and the board would have to probably look at this, and Dennis would look at it. But I'll just give you an example. Kingston's parking table does not address warehousing at this scale. They only address industrial slash manufacturing, which is a higher demand ratio and actual use. So if we look at commonly utilized parking rates for large warehousing in nearby towns that have them successfully, for instance, in Londonderry, in Portsmouth, those are about one space to one point five thousand square foot. That's in Londonderry. Portsmouth, it's about one to two thousand square feet for this type of facility. And we would, we're right in the middle of that. We're actually at about one point six spaces per thousand, and so we're right in the middle of parking that actually works in other towns with larger warehousing facilities like this. So we thought, we think that's relatively reasonable. I think the Kingston regs, if you take them literally, it overstates the required parking. We'd rather not put parking if we know we don't need it. So it does say in nine oh four fifteen B one that in relative sections, it says that the planning board can make that decision. And it makes, it allows the board to do some adjustments on that to encourage better overall site design, unquote. So we'd just like to leave you with that, and maybe the staff and the engineer can look at that, you can look at that. We feel that, you know, in talking to the users, that they were providing plenty of parking on that, especially compared to other similar facilities. I'm going to skip around a little bit, but on wildlife habitat, we're actually performing a wildlife habitat study right now. So we'll have that information shortly to you. On the shoreline impervious area, just like to point out that you won't be able to see it, but I can just tell it verbally, just give you a summary. On sheet twenty-two, there is a, I'm looking for it. There is a summary sheet on that, and we actually adjusted the data and the lot lines through the open spaces that we're not developing to address the shoreline impervious, and Dennis is absolutely right, this was one of his original comments. And we did indeed adjust all the plans to accommodate that. So the, he's right, there's a twenty percent maximum ceiling on that. And without getting into any, you know, debate on how that's interpreted, we just made it comply. We adjusted some lot lines around the back, and it all works and still works with all the other impervious criteria and everything else. So we're at sixteen percent, fourteen percent, nineteen percent for the three lots that have development on them. And we're allowed to have twenty percent. So we made those changes already on the subdivision plans and all the other plans that reflect that. So Dennis and Glenn will be able to have that opportunity to take a look at those. So the comment on the four K areas, we show those on the plans now. We also did the RCCD testing on those areas. They're actually overlapping in a good way where we have four Ks, where our systems are going, and we have the witness test pits on top of them already. And we're cross-calibrating all that data. So, you know, so any of these comments that Dennis would have, the easy ones, we're taking care of first, obviously, and you can see that. So there are a couple that he mentioned on the qualitative items. So we provided a supplemental drainage study, that was about six hundred pages. And the takeaway on that one is, okay, that the peaking flows and all that stuff, I think we can, we can work out. But he still wants, I hear, you know, us to look at the volumetrics and look at recharge. So we're now, now that we have a good model working and everything is in place, now we're looking at, you know, adding those supplemental recharge areas and also looking at the volumetric items that he's talking about. So we're on that right now. The vortex units, there's a few there that we're missing that he wants extras on, we're going to add them, that's not a problem. The detailing and all the other stuff there he was talking about, not a problem, the over, the weirs, everything, not a problem. We're adding, we're working on that right now. So those are just, you know, some of the takeaways. So we're already two-thirds of the way into that, getting that back to him again so that we can do another round, and we're moving pretty quickly. And he's, I know he's going to be tough on us on the recharge and the CUPs, and that's what we're digging into now. And we're looking forward to that, doing that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Carl. Okay. Let's see. We do have some department comments. I want to get those onto the record before, before we go back to the board for questions and comment. Let's see, we've got the health officer. It says, and again, I'm going to do my best to interpret the cryptic correspondence. It says subdivision, RCCD witnesses test pit suggest town engineer review plan in consult with health officer, waiting for septic plan.
I welcome, I think now that we have our hands around the septic detailing, we can actually work with the health officer, if the town engineer would like us to do that with him in concert, we'd be happy to do that. I think I know where he's going with, or he or she is going with the questions and the concerns, and those are good. And we feel confident, we'd like to coordinate with the health officer. That's not, not a problem at all.
Oh, okay.
The witnessing of the pit's done, which is good.
Right. And to that point, I mean, we would encourage you to be working with, with all the town departments, as I suspect you probably are, but but that's always, that's always good practice. Okay, so that's the, Dennis or Glenn, did you have any further comment with regard to Peter Broderick's, the health officer's comment here?
Yes, is Peter going to be reviewing those plans, or is that something you want me to review, or RCCD?
Well, I'm not sure. It said, he's suggesting that the town engineer review the plan and consult with the health officer. Glenn, you're nodding yes. You're muted though, so I can't hear you.
For subdivision plans, we generally do send them to RCCD. But it makes sense, again, like we did previously with the Fieldstone one. Dennis is becoming intensely aware and knowledgeable about this plan set, which is a learning curve that my Cuomo would have to undertake if we sent them to RCCD. So if Dennis is able to do it, I think it's crazy not to, to keep it within that, that framework of Peter and Dennis.
Okay. Does anyone on the board feel that, that they would like to see something different than that suggestion? If so, raise your hand or speak up. All right, seeing, seeing none, then why don't we take that as the course of action for this? That, and Dennis, will, do you have the capacity to, to work on that review with Peter?
Certainly, yep. I've done it before with a number of his, his plans that, like we did for the assisted living, that he's, big sites that he's not, he's not used to dealing with. So I usually work with him on the reviews.
Okay, all right. So Carl, that, that will be the, that will be the way we'll proceed with regard to the septic review?
Yes, sir, and we'll keep Dennis and Glenn copied on all of that along with the health officer, and he'll be seeing some coordination happening now, even between Tim Stone and us and the Aqua Point people, because there's a target we have to hit for good quality. And we work that backwards and make sure that the system from front to back works with the active treatment. So we just assume, just copy them on all the stuff that we're doing, open book process, and they'll see, they'll see the movement on that pretty quickly.
Okay, all right, so. So that's how we will proceed with septic. The other comment from department is from the building inspector. And this is a question that, that we've talked about at the last hearing, and it's been somewhat addressed tonight, but I suspect that there will be more questions about it, and that is, oh, and it was discussed at TRC. His question is, are there any restrictions on conditions on the rear exit entrance to Marshall Road, question mark? And that's that gated entrance that you indicated would be for, for some use by employees, but also for emergency access?
Correct.
And, okay. Well, I suspect that it's not the end of that discussion, but that, that is, that was the building inspector's comment. Okay. All right. All right, let's open it up to the board for questions or comments on what you've seen and heard tonight. Peter Coffin?
Well, as long as we're going over some of the plans. Last month, we talked about sheets nine and twelve needing to have the buffer on the residential properties changed from twenty feet to fifty feet, which would match what they presented last time, and which is shown on the other pages of the, of the plans. And those weren't revised, so they're not in the new plan set, the revised plans. So I assume that those have not been changed. In addition, sheet fifteen, which is the site overview plan. Last time, that did not have any buffers shown. It now has the twenty-foot buffers against the residential areas shown on it, which should be fifty, who agree with the rest of the plans and what they presented to us. So I just wanted to make, add this to the list of plan revisions that we should see next month, which is that all the plan sets, especially pages nine, twelve, and fifteen, would show the fifty-foot buffer, vegetated buffer when it's abiding residential property.
Okay. Carl, do you understand that?
Okay, I knew, yeah, I was going back to the plan, and the gentleman is, is correct. There are several plans. Some of them had the old setback on there, and some had the new setback on there, which is the fifty-foot buffer. So we didn't do all the plans, we were doing some of them, but the same CAD work, the same buffering would be shown on that. So on sheet fifteen, it shows the old buffer line. That should have been corrected to show the new one, and our design reflects that. On the subdivision plan, I'd just like to, we're showing the twenty-foot buffer and we're showing the fifty, and we have a note on the fifty that that would apply as, as long as the existing non-conforming residential uses on those two lots were continued to be existing residential uses. But I think I would, we're suggesting that if those two lots ever cease to be residential uses, because they're in the commercial district, that fifty-foot buffer requirement would go away, would revert it back to the twenty. But it, you know, really doesn't matter to us, we're designing to the twenty, we're, I mean, we're designed to the fifty. We're supplementing, that's really where it matters. And so the gentleman on the board is correct. Peter, we have to, there's other plans that have to show that, so they're all consistent. And our intent is to keep that fifty on all the plans.
All right. I mean, you understand, it seems as though you understand it, Carl, it's just a matter of making sure that it's consistent through all of the plan set pages.
Yes, yes, and I apologize about that.
And, and I just want to make sure that we're not showing two different buffer lines, you know, one for the requirement now and one for some potential in the future. That's just going to create confusion. I mean, it needs to reflect what the requirement is now for the conditions that exist now.
Okay, so that point taken, we'll just show only that and that's the 50. We won't show any 20 at all. And that, that'll just take its course. That's fine.
Right. And you know, at some point in the future, if that, if that were to be a change that it can be dealt with at that point, but I think for now, if we show two different conditions, it's just going to be confusing for folks.
Point very well taken and we will only show the 50 and, and make sure that's on all the plans.
Okay, excellent.
I had another question is maybe for Glenn Greenwood about the comments from the TRC. And that was about the abatement for the vernal pool and also the wetland setbacks as going to the ARM. And that would be Glenn, I think you said tonight that that would be spent either in town or regionally. As opposed to someplace like Colbrook or Pittsburgh, which wouldn't help this town at all.
That's my understanding is that that is the desire by DES to keep it as localized as possible.
And who, who makes that decision? Is it the applicant as to where the offset is or is it DES?
I think it's, I think it's negotiated between DES and the applicant.
Okay, I'm just putting in my plug right now. That I'd like to see abatement of loss of vernal pools or wetlands. Abated in town as opposed to somewhere far off. Just, just because I think that's important.
I, I would agree and I, you know, preferably in town, but certainly within the, certainly within the watershed, I would, I would hope. Other comments from the board? Questions from the board? Okay, all right, before. I'm going to open it up for public comment shortly. So if, and I do have a couple of letters to read. But if there are folks who would like to speak. Just send a note in chat to Glenn Greenwood so that, so that he can see them and, and we can recognize you from that, from that point and then, and then get you to, to a live mic. But before I do that, we all, we have the chair of the conservation commission. I see Evelyn Nathan's name on there and since you're a department head, I don't have written comments from you at this point, Evy, but if, if you, if you have comment to make. I, I recognize you at this point for that. And I'm not seeing you unmuted, so I'm guessing not.
Hi, I'm here.
Well, there we go.
Okay, I made the comments at the TRC meeting. I don't have anything new to speak to at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. I'm going to start with the, I'm going to open this now for public comment and just for the record, it is seven forty-eight roughly. I have a couple of written correspondence pieces from the Kenters, which is, is one of the residential properties abutting this project on Marshall Road. And let's see, I'm not sure which order to take them. I have one from Almus, but it looks as though it might have been updated from Andrea and it included photographs and it just came in. So I'm guessing the board probably hasn't had a chance to see it. We might have to distribute that out after the meeting, but. So I'm going to. I'm going to start with the letter from, from Andrea Kenter dated October 20. Actually, they're both dated October 20, but this one is regarding a conversation with the Department of, Department of Environmental Services. It's addressed to this board and it says, I contacted Ridgely Mock, supervisor of the alteration of terrain program at the New Hampshire Department of Trans, I'm sorry, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. Who confirmed that the applicant has erroneously indicated during past meetings that work within the shoreline buffer associated with the Little River will be covered under the Dubay Group's AOT permitting associated with the proposed 266 Route 125 LLC project. Sheet three of Dubay's most recent plan set dated October 8, 2020 does not reference a requirement for a shoreline permit for the project. Given that the significant alterations including grade changes, infrastructure installation, vegetation removal, drainage alterations, et cetera, are proposed. I encourage the board to obtain input on this and to also include the Exeter River Local Advisory Committee, ERLAC, on relevant correspondence as the Little River is an integral part of the regional Exeter River watershed. Respectfully, Andrea W. Kenter. I, and just, just so that the, the board and the public knows, I did connect with both Mr. And Mrs. Kenter through the chat function earlier in the meeting, asking them if they wanted to read these pieces of correspondence themselves and they chose not to. So that's why I am reading them. They might want to add further comment, but they can do so by indicating that in chat. But I'd like, Carl, if you can unmute yourself, I don't know if you wish to respond to what I just read.
Sure. So I, I I, I haven't seen that letter, but can you reread the sentence or if Andrea can explain? We do a lot of work with DES, Alteration of Terrain Bureau. Obviously, we do a lot of work through Ridgely Mock's office with their staff and also shore land permitting. I'm not sure if the letter says that. Obviously, we have to have a AOT permit and do all that work. I'm not sure if you're talking about shore land. Can you reread that? It was only a couple of sentences.
It says. This was in her conversation with Ridgely Mock. It says, who confirmed that the applicant has erroneously indicated during past meetings that work within the shoreline buffer associated with the Little River will be covered under the Dubay Group's AOT permitting associated with the project.
Okay, so well, this project works within the local shoreline ordinance, which has a shoreline district and buffer locally in the ordinance of the town. We also need to work on a AOT permit, which is, we recognize that on all the plans. I'd still like some clarification that we've checked the consolidated list of water bodies in rivers on the, the AOT website, the DES website, I'm sorry. And the Little River is not subject to a shore land permit through DES. It is subject to shore land criteria in action by the town. There's a, there's a shoreline ordinance with the town. There's also a shoreline permit with the state, but only when it's required and if it's, if it's applicable to certain water bodies. This location is not on their list unless they just added it, you know, a couple of days ago. But they're supposed to, there's criteria involved on that notification. But I'm still a little confused with that, that comment. I'd like, if, I mean, I know Andrea is up here. I can see her on the screen. If she can just elaborate.
I'm, I'm going to recognize her now and, and I'm, I'm going to ask that she just make the comment or ask a question. And I don't want the two of you getting into a discussion and debate on this Zoom thing, but. So Andrea, if, if, if you'd like to just further clarify this for, and if you could just address it to the, to me or the board, that would be great.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I did, I did talk to Ridge twice today, described the project. There is an exemption under the shoreline RSA, which allows for getting an exemption to not needing a shoreline permit. He indicated that during their review of the AOT process that this would be a red flag and they would probably be coming back to you for additional information, given what I described as coming in on, on what was likely going to be on your AOT permit.
Okay, so, so you're saying that, that, that DES is going to be getting back to the, to the applicant?
Once they submit their AOT, yes. And although Ridge, Ridge, Ridge doesn't you know, he, he is the supervisor in the, in the AOT group. He, he does not have shoreline jurisdiction for the permitting, but he indicated that would be a red flag on the AOT permit.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That, that's fine. We can work with that.
Okay, all right, so.
Glenn?
Lynn, yeah.
Just one thing for those people who are listening in tonight that are unfamiliar with our ordinances. But Kingston Shoreland Protection Ordinance parallels that of the state of New Hampshire, but is more restrictive in some areas. So certainly it's going to be addressed in one way or another, either through the, whether the state chimes in or not, it has been. The town does follow state standards and adds their own as well.
Yes, thanks Lynn. All right. Yes, thank you Glenn. I did see that. Okay, so we have two more pieces of correspondence from the Kenters, one from Mr. Kenter. And then the follow-up, which is related to it from, from Mrs. Kenter. So I'll read Mr. Kenter's first and this one came in by email on October 14th. Dear Kingston Planning Board, my wife and I are rebutters to the proposed distribution center on Route 125 in Kingston, identified as 266 Route 125 LLC. Our property is located at 23 Marshall Road. Recently, we noticed that the developer and/or, and/or his agents have operated an excavator on what appears to be our property. They have destroyed a number of our trees and have dug a test pit. All clearly to the south of our northern property line. We have verified this according to the marked boundary line markers. The location of these boundary markers are known to us and are identified on the site plans. We therefore request a site walk to verify this intrusion with attendance from Dubay, the town planning board and the butters. Furthermore, I will be asking for redress at a minimum in the form of having trees of the appropriate species, number and size replanted. Sincerely, Almus Kenter, 23 Marshall Road. All right, I'm just going to go ahead and read the, the follow-on to this and then, and then Carl, if, if you wish to to respond to that, you can do it as a, sort of as a as a, as a combined response, because they're, because they're both, these two are related. The correspondence is related. So this one's dated October 20 from Andrea Kenter, addressed to this board. I am providing supplemental information to the recent correspondence transmitted by my husband regarding what we believe to be encroachment onto our property by the Dubay Group during their recent test pitting activities associated with the 266 Route 125 LLC project. In support of our prior letter to the board enclosed, please find photos of the test pit area designated MTP dash two in the field and plan set 34 identifying three of the property bounds and two prior test pit locations, TP 34 and TP 35. Review of plans submitted by Dubay to the planning board do not appear to correlate with what is observed in the field. Specifically, the locations stakes, location stakes for TP 34 and 35 do not appear accurately portrayed on the plan sheet. As the field location of the TP 35 stake is west of the line drawn between property bounds two and three on the attached plan set. Again, we respectfully request a site walk with interested board members, Dubay and other interested parties as soon as possible. Respectfully, Andrea W. Kenter. And as I said, this just came in. Came in today, tonight, I believe it was. Ellen just, just sent it over to me. So the board doesn't have Ellen, the board doesn't have the benefit of seeing this yet, is that right? Ellen, I can't. Can't hear.
Then just, I, I do, I did receive those by email before the meeting.
Oh, okay. So they went out to all the, okay, all right. So there, there are photographs. There's also a, there's also a appears to be a a copy of the plan sheet that she refers to with the, the areas of the photographs identified on them. So they're, they're, they're sort of tied together. Carl, I'll, I'll open it to you if you, if you would like to respond to this.
Sure. So I'm looking at the plans now, just to, I'm not, I, I don't have a copy of any of that correspondence or the photos and.
We'll, we'll, we'll get that to you, but as I said, it just came in.
Yep, that, that's not a problem. TP 35, for example, was shown to be about 50 feet off the property line. We, we did a full survey out here. We, we staked these out. Miller Engineering. Mr. Stone, Mr. Gove, our office, our surveyors. We all worked on this and we staked those out, but I, I, I can send our surveyors out there tomorrow morning and double check. I mean, we, we staked all this out. They did everything they were supposed to do. I'm going to double check everything. I, I highly doubt it, but I mean, things happen, but I, I'd like to get to the facts and get to the facts quickly in, in the morning. And we always would welcome site walks with the butters if they would like to show us what, you know, where this is. We'd go out there and check and double check. And yeah, we can do that right away. We've just got to get to the facts.
Okay, all right. With regard to a site walk, if, you know, if the board was so inclined to, to do that. We would, we would be noticing it as a, as a public meeting. And it would be, it would be advertised and it would be open to anyone and everyone who wanted to attend. You know, separate from that, separate from that, the applicant can certainly be working with, with any of the butters as they, you know, as they wish. But at, at some point during the night, tonight, the board should, should decide if they do want to do a site walk on this because it's, 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 if they, if we do want to do it, it's something we should schedule and, and get it, get it noticed.
And that, that's fine. Just let us know, but it, actually, when we do meet with the butter, I don't know if someone from the town should be there. And I think someone has their hand raised, but we, we'd just like to coordinate that, whatever staff would like us to do and the butters, we'd be happy to go out there. Verify everything. And then if you, the planning board wants to sidewalk, that's fine too, obviously. We welcome that.
Okay. All right. Let's see. All right, why don't we, Glenn, oh, Richard, are you waving your hand?
Yes, I am. Well, we talked about this last night at the Slackman's meeting because we got a copy of this letter. And typically these types of things are worked out between the two people and not involving the town. Because this would be a trespassing issue if that's what happened. And the town just doesn't get involved typically as a select board or as a planning board that it's worked out between the two people. I'm not saying that we don't need a site walk and maybe we want somebody there to witness tomorrow, but typically we don't give an opinion on this.
Right, okay.
We're, we're going to, it is piqued my curiosity. We're going to go out there right away and I, I just, I just feel more comfortable if, if, you know, I work through Glenn or somebody. I just don't want to be out in the middle of woods. You know, I mean. Well, we're going to, we're going to go check that right away and.
All right, well, if, if that's, if that's the case, then maybe we should make arrangement here for at least someone. I don't know if Dennis might be available to, 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 to join the, the group and, and sort of be the. I don't know if Dennis might be available to, uh, to, to, to join the, the group and, and sort of be the, the town's agent on this?
I could, it just depends on when, when you're going to do it, that's all.
All right, could, could you coordinate with Dennis, Carl?
Y- yes, sir, and I think Dennis would need to know, uh, or I would need to know who, i- if, if the Kenters, you know, had, uh, you know, a cellphone or something like that where we could text them or call them. You know, that, that would be good to, to come together and, and verify this stuff, and we can walk the whole boundary with whatever.
Glenn, there, I'm sorry Carl, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but Glenn, I'm getting a, a email, I mean, a chat from Andreas asking for either Thursday or Friday, because they both wish to be present and they're not available tomorrow.
Okay.
And likewise, I, I would love to offer, but I'm in Brentwood all day tomorrow.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Lynn?
If this is a civil matter and not a town matter, should the town be there? Uh, I would think we might want to check with town council to make certain, well, to find out what he would prefer we do.
I, I don't think it matters if we're there, we just can't give a decision. You know, if we're witnessing what goes on and everything, that's fine, but we, we aren't going to say, yes, that's on their property, or yes, that's on, you know, the Sears property.
Okay.
Okay.
If it's okay, I, I could cor- coordinate with a town engineer, I, I just need to have someone else there and that would be good and fair and reasonable and, and, uh, we'll walk the whole boundary, uh, we can do it. I think I saw a chat, it says Thursday or Friday, it, you know, if we can do that. Uh, I don't know what Mr. Quintel.
All right, I'm, Carl, rather than try to do this now, uh, I'm, I'm going to leave it to you to coordinate with Dennis and with the Kenters. The, uh, on, on Mr. Kentor's email, he has a phone number here, would you like to write that down?
Uh, well, it, I don't know if, uh, you want to say his phone number to everybody out here.
Well, that's true. Maybe, uh, Mr. Kentor, if you could, in a, in private chat to Mr. Dubay, convey your phone number to him.
Andrea, Glenn, I'm sorry, Andrea has sent it to me privately, so I'll, I'll send it along privately.
That's great, tha- thank you, and we'll, we'll coordinate that for later this week, uh, with Mr. Quintel and Mr. and Mrs. Kentor and our survey staff, and, um, I'll be there.
Okay, all right, great. All right, Glenn, are there, are there folks, uh, queued up in, in chat for comments or questions?
Um, no, oth- other than Evy is, thinks that, um, she has commented that a, a site, a general sidewalk would be helpful to her and the commission.
Okay, um, well, the board should be thinking about that, uh, looks like we have something coming in from Mr. Norton.
Correct, Mr. Norton is just chatting.
And I believe it's Little River Road. Forget the number, but if you could repeat the number, Mr. Norton, and, and we'll recognize you.
Thanks Glenn, it's forty-nine Little River Road. So I guess my question is kind of more to you, Glenn, so, I'm really concerned about the fact that we're going through the process, and I was hoping you could explain the process to us. When we're talking about all of this without knowing who the applicant, I mean, who the client is yet, or the, or the user per se. So for example, uh, in the last meeting, they presented the traffic study that was based on historical data for the warehousing industry. Kyle said twice tonight regarding parking, that he was looking at like warehouses in New Hampshire and using that data to decide what the property requirements are. I think we kind of established previously that a building of this size with a hundred and seventy-four docks in that particular building is obviously a distribution center, which would have a much larger impact on things like traffic and parking. So I'm sitting here watching this thinking, okay, when, and also, I forgot, you're going to have a meeting on Monday with the police chief, the, the chief of police, for example, to talk about traffic. But it seems like it's not ba- we have no idea who the client is, so I don't understand, and maybe you can explain it to us and how the process works, how anybody can have these discussions, and then the planning board can actually make a decision, either yea or nay, without knowing who the client is and what their specific impact you have on the town. And so I'm just confused by that, and I was hoping you could enlighten us on how the process works.
Okay, well, I'm not sure that I can do justice to it, uh, maybe Glenn can help, but, um, I, I can tell you that the, the planning board would prefer to know, uh, who the user is, because I think that, you know, when we review an application of any kind, uh, and, and particularly one as significant as this, um, it's, 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 at least I view it as helpful to have as much information as possible. However, it, it, it isn't a requirement to reveal the, uh, the end user, uh, but it is a requirement for the applicant to be conveying to the board the, um, all the details regarding the use, regardless of who the actual user is. Uh, the, 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 the use of the site has to be identified, has to be defined, you know, whether it's distribution, whether it's warehouse, whether it's both, whether, whatever, uh, and the vehicular traffic and all of the site issues that come into play, uh, have to be identified, and that's what the trap, you know, in, in the case of traffic, uh, the traffic study is based on certain, certain conditions that are anticipated based on the use, and so, um, the, the idea is to provide all that detail, regardless of who the actual, uh, user is, so that, so that the board can, can make a, a judgment on it. Glenn, help me out here.
No, you've, you've, you've described that very well. I mean, there, there is the, they have the, an applicant has the right to provide to us the information that they are able to provide, and there are times when they're under non-disclosure agreements and whatnot. When that's the case, the board generally takes the, the stance that we have to look at our regulations from their most conservative perspective to cover the possibilities.
So even if the information they give you is not relevant to the, the actual final use, you have to make a determination based on that?
Well, the, the, the board needs to be provided with data that's relevant to the use that's being proposed. If it's not, then you've got to disconnect and you can't make a, a valid judgment on the application, uh.
So just to add, it is not common, but it is not unusual for the planning board to approve something without knowing who is going to be the tenant. For example, the next hearing tonight is going to have eighteen units, and we have no idea at this point and may not even know when the final applications come through or the final, um, approval comes through, who will be occupying that property. In this case, with two sixty-six Route 125, the planning board is approving a use. And whoever the tenant is, they must conform to the use that has been approved. And it's up to the town, and should they not conform to that use, then it's up the ta- to the town to either have them come before the planning board and revise the use, or to, uh, take action to make certain that they conform to the use that has been approved.
So if they don't conform to the use, so they have to restart the application, for example, if, if, if the meeting, or the same, or the meeting before you make a decision, they say it's this, um, applicant, I mean, this, this client. And so the traffic is ten times more. Do you have to make a decision? How does that work? Do they have to reapply, or do they, do you guys get a different traffic study, or how does that work?
Yeah, they, they, th- there would have to be new, if, if it changes significantly in any way, uh, then, then the, the board doesn't vote at that point, it's going to be taking, if this happens before a decision is made, then new information is, is taken into account and, and we continue the process. If, if the board votes, uh, and I, you know, provides an approval one way or the other, uh, and then between that approval and the time that the project gets started, all of a sudden, something changes. Uh, the applicant needs to come back, uh, to go through the process again as a revised, uh, plan.
One last question?
Sure.
Do you have an expectation in this particular case to find out who the client is before you're voting, or do you not know?
We, we have no clue, and as I said, uh, the, the, the applicant is not obligated to tell us.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to just, uh, put out one thing, just to give us a sense of scale. Uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, Glenn, or anybody on the board, but, uh, right now, there is a category on parking, that, uh, you're essentially two spaces per thousand plus another one per thousand, so it's three parking spaces per a thousand square feet is the requirement. And that's the only category you have, and that's very similar to, you know, towns have certain categories, they don't cover everything. So that's three per thousand, just for the new building, if we met that quote-unquote requirement, we would need two thousand four hundred parking spaces. Uh, it, it's like, that's, uh, this is a warehouse distribution, it's not a fulfillment center, even not a fulfillment center, two thousand four hundred parking spaces, so what I had to do on the notes in the plan notes is to compare that, and I think the board would, uh, usually ask for, and we provided it, just some calibration, just some basic, uh, comparisons to other facilities and other requirements in other towns. So, uh, two thousand four hundred parking spaces, yeah, that's, that's crazy, uh, for a warehouse, even a warehouse distribution facility. Um, other towns that have similar facilities, we can, you know, they're, they're at point five per thousand, not three, but point five per thousand, that's their requirement. Or point six per thousand. That's what we're providing, i- and it, it, it passes the smell test, uh, because we're doing what uh, other towns would like facilities have in their facilities for warehouse distribution. If this was another type of facility, then we'd be in violation of the site plan regulations, we'd have to go back to the board and change that, but, uh, I think we would all agree that, uh, the one category where we have is two thousand four hundred parking spaces, it just seems, that's just, that's just crazy. It's, it, the intent of that regulation at three per thousand, I believe, was not intended for this type of use, uh, when that was written. Uh, and that's all I have to say, it's just a calibration. And we're certainly in, in the ballpark with other towns and other facilities that have the same use that we're providing.
Okay, all right, um, I'd like to, Glenn is there, uh, do we have other, um, folks wanting to comment?
Yes, I sent, I sent along to you, um, a request that John DiStefano would like to speak to the board.
Um, I'm looking for the name.
On mine, he's
Don't see it.
Third row at the end.
Nope, not seeing it. Oh, there, John DiStefano.
Stefano.
Stefano.
Good evening, everybody, thank you very much for your time.
Yes.
So I have a couple of concerns in regards to the, uh, velocity.
Stefano?
Yes.
Uh, would you please, uh, provide your, uh, your address for the record?
I don't, I can, I'll chat it to you, I don't think it's important at this point.
Well, actually, it is, uh, it's, this is a public, this is a public hearing.
I'm at twenty-six, twenty-six Monarch Way.
Thank, thank you.
Sure. Um, one of the concerns I have is being a direct butter on Route 107 is the velocity of speed and the quantity of traffic that is currently going on there. When were the case studies done to determine the volume of traffic that is handled on 107? What times of day, what weekdays, what weekends, uh, in the potential traffic that's going to be required for this, uh, new facility, uh, what are the hours of operation that we're going to have such a large amount of traffic on 107? And, uh, that's, I think, is a concern to anybody who lives along the Route 107 path. It's not 125. And 125 is not my concern at this point, because I'm far enough from the exit, uh, on intersection of 101, 125 and 107. But that's, of course, a concern. The amount of traffic, the noise levels of larger vehicles and, uh, and speed, of course, is a concern.
Right, okay, uh, I, I, I'm going to do a quick response, uh, just from what I know, from what, and I don't know if, uh, Mr. DiStefano, if you were, uh, if you were in on the first hearing or not, but, um, there, there is, there is a traffic study that has been submitted, and, uh, that's on our website, Glenn and Ellen, is that correct? Uh, and if you haven't seen that, uh,
No, I have not.
You might want to go to the website and check all of the plans, and this, this goes for everyone else on the call too. Um, all of the materials that the applicant has submitted, plans and studies, uh, are all on the town's website. And if you have any trouble finding it, just let us know, but, um, but that data is there for you to review. And with regard, with regard to the, the concern about traffic, it's my understanding from what the applicant has proposed that, that all of the truck traffic, uh, will be entering and exiting onto Route 125. The, uh, now where they, you know, they, they could end up on 107 if they're going to be traveling that way to, to head west, for instance, or north, north as it, as it is. If, if your concern is the access way that goes out onto Marshall Road, we've been told that that's going to be limited to a s- a subset of the employees working at the facility, so, passenger vehicles is our understanding, certainly my understanding, and that it's a gated, uh, a gated access way and with some subset of the employee base having access to that. Uh, plus it's, that access can also be used for emergency, uh, by fire and police. I, I don't know if that helps, uh, i- in your question, but, um, that's sort of my short answer to it.
Sure, so in regards to the, uh, volume of traffic was the, and again, I, I will have to consult the, uh, website to get the data, you just mentioned, the, uh, estimated flow of traffic, how do they see that based upon a hundred percent employment? Uh, how is that going to affect, you know, weekdays, weekends, nights? You know, 107 is not well-lit. People drive at very fast speeds along 107, both east and west. Uh, they use it as a bypass instead of driving up to 101, uh, to get to the other side, um, and, uh, take it up that way. So, uh, you know, those are just questions that I have.
Yep, okay, uh, I, I, again, I, I think it's probably best at this point to refer you to that study, the traffic study, because there's a lot of information in there, and, um, I, I, I don't know how much of that we want to go into, again, at this point. Uh, Mr. Pernaw, at the first hearing, did a, a pretty thorough description of, of what was in that, a traffic study, and, and just so you know, Mr. DiStefano, the town is, uh, in the process of doing a, a peer review of that study with our own engineer. And so, uh, we, we've, uh, on behalf of the town, uh, we've hired TF Moran to, uh, to do a peer review of that and do a response to that, so the town has, uh, has, has a, has a, of the, of the third-party view of it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
I'm certainly not opposed to growth and, uh, um, you know, moving forward, it's just, you know, when you take these secondary roads, you bring three, four thousand vehicles to a, uh, not well-developed road, uh, it can only incur future problems.
Understood. Thank you for the question. Uh, Glenn, do we have others?
Um, that is the last one that I see.
Okay, all right, I see a, a, a number of other folks on the call, um, if, if there are any other questions at this particular, in particular moment, this would be your time to identify yourself and, uh, let us know. Uh, this won't be your last opportunity, because, uh, obviously, we're going to be making a decision on this tonight, but, okay, all right, so I'm going to close public comment at this point at eight twenty-five. And Robin has her hand up.
I did, sorry, the train's going by, so it might be bad time.
I did, sorry, the train's going by, so it might be bad timing. I understand not disclosing the user of the property and that that's not a requirement, but I think moving forward, something that would be helpful would be to define the kinds and types of materials that will be stored presumably in a warehouse. And what if any repair function will be on site for the vehicles coming in and out of the property?
Okay. Carl, that might be something that you can answer quickly for us?
There will be no repair of vehicles on the property. And what was, was the other part of the question, I'm sorry, I was.
What, what, what material, what, what items might be stored in the facility?
I can get back to you on that. Certainly wouldn't, you know, be hazardous material, things like that. I, I, I had to check in with our client and it's, it's a warehouse, I mean, it would be subject to, you know, code and everything else, but it's warehousing materials, so I'll, I'll find out. But there, there won't be any truck repair or fueling or anything like that on the property.
Okay. I, I would have, I would also have to believe that the fire department would probably be interested to know what kinds of materials are going to be in the building, especially a building that's covering 18 acres under roof. So, and so Carl, you can be thinking about that and when we get together the next time, maybe you'll have some, some more information for us.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other questions from the board? All right, so we've, we've got a couple of things that are, that are still moving parts here. We've got, we've got some issues going on in the field, Dennis is going to be on top of that. Got the traffic study, which is under peer review right now. And hopefully by the time we meet next time, we'll have the results of that. The applicant is still working on the hydrogeologic study. And once that's done, it will be going to the town's reviewing consultant as well to, to, to look at that, so that's still a, still a moving piece. There was a question earlier about whether or not the board wanted to do a site walk. And so if, if the board wants to do that, we should make that decision tonight. Peter Coffin?
I suggest that we don't do a site walk, let Dennis collect the information. I, I, I think I saw in the chat that, that Mr. Kenter had said that the way this affects us as a board is that it might affect the data, the location of the data on the test bits. And that is something that Dennis could collecting that they, when they do a review of this and find out exactly if the test data information is correct, we could review it then. I don't think we need to do a site walk.
All right, Peter, I, I'm just, just, and I, I'm sorry for not being clear on my question. I, I, I wasn't, I didn't mean to refer specifically to the, to the issue that Mr. Kenter brought up. But more as a general question, sometimes the board will do a site walk on a, on a, on a, on a proposed development just as a general, general thing. And so my, it's my question to the board is if that's something that you, that you feel you want to do. Peter, you're, you're, I, I, I know you're speaking, but, but you keep breaking up, pal.
I don't feel I need a site walk.
Okay, you're saying you don't think we need a site walk?
Correct.
Yeah, I think maybe later.
All right, maybe later, Ellen? Unmute? Oh, you're, you're muted again. There you go. Yep, there you go.
I'd like to caution the board that maybe later is going to get maybe colder if anyone's thinking of doing a site walk. And I would think that due to the size of the project and the impact of the town, the board would probably want to do at least an initial walk, you don't maybe have to do the whole property. But I know as a person, I would like to know where that entrance on 107 is going to be and where it is in relationship to the road. So I would think that at least some types of sidewalk might be prudent.
Okay. Other thoughts from the board? Well. All right, I I, I, I know Ellen that you're not currently a voting member, so, so, but, but I, you certainly have weighed in. I'd like, I'd like, I'd like the rest of the board to indicate whether they feel a site walk is prudent at this point or not. So, Richard?
I'm very familiar with the site, have been on it many times in the past, don't feel like I need one. I do agree with Ellen that if there's any chance of having one at all, we should go on and get it done because it is going to be very cold any day now.
Yep. Okay, Lynn?
I think I'd like to see the plans a little further along before we have the site walk.
Okay. All right, Peter Baiki, you've already weighed in on that. Peter Coffin, you did as well, I know.
Yeah, I, I, I said maybe later and that's what spawned Ellen's comment that I had forgotten, it's getting cold. But I still think I'd like to see the results of some of the surveys that we have, have something we're specifically looking at when we go on the site walk. So I, I still think that we want to get, get more data gathered before we go out there and look at, for example, the wetlands areas, whatever. Maybe November.
Okay, Chris?
I personally don't need a site walk of the property. I do respect the need, if there were members of the public, that would be their opportunity to maybe go walk the site. So I'm not opposed to the scheduling of a site walk so that there may be an opportunity since it would be a open to the public type thing if they wanted to see it, but I don't personally need it myself to make a decision.
Okay, thanks, Robin?
I guess to Chris's point, I, I think it would be helpful to, to do for anybody who, who is interested. And I, I guess the November timeframe seems to make sense, so we won't be buried under snow.
Okay. All right. All right, it's, so the consensus seems to be that, that, that a site walk is probably going to be in order. The timing of it, however, is, might be just a tad premature right now. So we'll readdress this issue at the, at the next, at the next hearing. Did, did I miss anybody in going around the table here? The board? No. All right. We should, we should now determine a date for when we will hear this one again. Suggestions, a motion from the board or suggestions on timing? Peter?
Can we ask the applicant, maybe when he'd be ready to come back before the board, will he be ready in November?
I heard what, I heard you were saying to ask the applicant.
Will, when, when will the applicant be ready to come back before the board?
Yeah, okay, so Carl, the question is for you. Knowing what you have outstanding to do, our, our, our next public hearing would be November 17th with plans due somewhere in advance of that. How does that work for you?
Unmute. That, that works fine for us. We'd like to continue on the, the course of action that we are on. And now that we have our focused punch list on, on things and we're coordinating with engineering review, traffic review, fire protection review, all of those things. And those are starting to happen within the next few days. I would like to request that the board continue this to November 17th. And I know we can get a lot done ahead of time so that Dennis and Glenn and the reviewers can see the progress on the items that they're looking for. And we just keep, keep, keep at it.
Okay. All right.
If that's okay with you.
Yeah, it's fine, I'd say, as long as, as long as you feel that, that, that timeframe allows you to, you know, be back to us with, with, with progress and, and we'll just continue working at it. So we would need a motion from the board to continue to November 17th with new materials submitted by, what would the date be, Ellen or Lynn or?
I make a motion, we continue the hearing to Tuesday night, November 17th at 6:45 PM with materials due in the planning board office by, the town offices by noon on Thursday, November 5th.
Oh, second.
Okay, motion by Lynn, second by Robin.
Before you take that vote?
I'm sorry?
Before you take that vote, could I just say something?
Absolutely, I was just going to open it up and ask, ask Carl if, if he had any issues with that and, but go ahead, Glenn.
My, my only concern is their hydrogeologic study is scheduled to be done on November 5th. And if we get that on November 5th, I can't speak affirmatively that Anna can get her review of that back to us by the 17th. She, she may be able to do that, but I'm not sure that she can.
Well, I, you know, I, I, I hear what you're saying. And, and that might, that might not happen for the 17th, which means that, you know, it'll still be a significant outstanding item by that time. But hopefully there will be enough other material in that we can work on. And hopefully we'll have the peer review of the traffic study. We'll have some of these other things worked on, some of the punch list stuff that Carl has from, from Dennis and so I, I hear you Glenn, but.
I, I just wanted to make that clear.
Yep, yep, Carl, you understand that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ellen?
I, I just want the board to realize that after the November 17th meeting, you have a December 1st meeting. And I only bring that up because you already have two items on the agenda and you then would have this continued to the 17th. And I don't know where Fieldstone's going to wind up. And so you do have Saddleup coming in on the 17th. So I just want you all to be aware of what your schedule is winding up to be on that date.
Okay. Well, Carl, I don't know if you have any thoughts about that? If, if you want to stick with the 17th?
Yes, we, we would like to, I, I think every time we do a round, I think we're focusing. And so we can get our hands around things. And we're also focusing on what the reviewers are very, very interested in to, to make sure that we have, as Dennis mentioned, you know, sometimes it's the law of haves. And so every time we do this, usually there's about half the comments and there might be a few new ones, but we're really focused. And we did it the last time, we promised you we'd get a lot of stuff done and we did. I think we're going to do it again and it'll be in, in more detail on the items that you guys were looking for. And I think we would get a lot done and I appreciate the board, I really appreciate the board meeting with us and, and being diligent and, and helping. It's a tremendous experience, thank you.
Okay, I just want to make sure, just want to make sure the board understood what Ellen is saying. It looks as though the 17th is now sort of lining up to be a, a, a pretty busy meeting. So just, just so that you're all aware. All right, so we have a motion and a second to continue this hearing to November 17th with plans, any new materials do no later than noon on November 5 into the planning board office. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, Ellen, would you please call the roll?
Sure, Glenn Copelman?
Yes?
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Robin DeGuey?
Yes.
Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Peter Baiki?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
I think that's everyone.
Okay. All right. So that's unanimous, that's, that's the, that's the continuation of this hearing. For those of you, members of the public who are, are on this call, this is your notice of the, of that continuation. And I fully expect that it will be continued in the Zoom platform since, since our numbers are in New Hampshire are, are now going in the wrong direction. So I don't imagine that, that our meeting format will change by next month. So thank you all for participating and Carl, we'll see you back here next month. And it is now 8:40. I'm going to call a quick five-minute recess, I, I need to take a, a, a quick break. And I suspect that many of you will need to stretch your legs as well. So we'll try to be back here at 8:45. All right? I don't think we have quite everyone back yet. Oh, there's Robin. Saw Lynn just a minute ago. There's Ellen. Okay. All right. It's 8:45. We'll restart. Restart our meeting. And I see Doug's here with us for Fieldstone. So let me, let me introduce this hearing and then, and then turn it over to you, Doug, to bring us up to date on where we are. This is Fieldstone Industrial Park, 34 Route 125, tax map R2 Lot 13. It is a site plan and subdivision review. The proposed site plan and subdivision is to construct three six condominium unit commercial buildings, 12,000 square feet each with supporting infrastructure. The existing parcel is undeveloped with gravel processing areas. All right. And this, this is a continued public hearing. So Doug McGuire from the Dubay Group is, is the presenter and the what am I trying to say? The you're, you're, you're speaking for the applicant, yes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I, I, the applicant is with us as well, Mr. Wilder. He's on the Zoom.
Oh, I, I see him. Yes. Okay, Doug, why don't you, why don't you bring us up to date? We do have, after you have a chance to say some words, we do have, we do have comments from from Dennis, Rocky County Conservation District and Conservation Commission and town departments. But why don't, why don't we let you start us off?
Okay, sure. Well, I'm sure everyone's well aware of this. It's certainly been in front, in front of you for some time now. We have had some delays on some critical items, as you are aware, most specifically with the establishment in full of the easement through the Comcast abutting property. I'm pleased to report that we have that in hand. It's official, signed, executed. And that was obviously a, a critical piece to this development. We knew, we knew we were going to get it. It was just a matter of, of when and there was a lot of back and forth with the attorneys and then another layer of attorneys, but that has been executed and is in place. The alteration of terrain, as I think I mentioned last time, is in place. So some of these critical items that, that we had remaining have been addressed. I think some of the big other additional items were, which we never really got into any detail on in some of our previous hearings, were the, the concerns with regards to the existing wetland and the, and, and the desire for that to be evaluated by RCCD. That was able to be taken care of. RCCD went out to the site and evaluated that with our wetland scientist, Luke Hurley. And they were mostly on the same page in, in their evaluation through some additional discussion. There was an additional point awarded to a portion of the wetland, which would increase the setback from 25 to 35 feet. The update, the plans have been updated to reflect that change. It required a small reduction in building size of the third building to accommodate that setback. Obviously not news that the, that the applicant was looking to hear, but he reckon, recognizes that, you know, that's, that's part of the process. So we have extended that buffer to the 35, no disturb. All of our plans have been updated to reflect that change. So I think that was, you know, another one of the larger items. The, one of the last remaining items was the septic designs, which those have now been completed and have been submitted to the town for their sign off. Basically what you're required to do with septics is, is they are required to be locally approved first. That plan or that, that form is then signed by the local official. And then we would submit that up to the state. So we are awaiting that, but we'll have full intention of getting those right up to the state. Those were pretty straightforward. And I think the biggest piece on that would have been the test pits of which we completed those with witnessing by RCCD. So those were, I, I actually did those personally with Mike out on site and we were in agreement with what we saw out there and the septic designs reflected those results. So all in all, I, I think that it, it, it has been a bit of a longer process, but I think we do have most items in order. I'm of the understanding that we've satisfied staff's comments, but I'll let them speak to that themselves. I know you said, Mr. Chair, that there were a few items that needed to be discussed, but I haven't received anything as of, eh, eh, to date of any additional comments that I'm aware of.
Okay. Right. Thank you, Doug. Glenn, I don't think that you had a comment sheet for tonight. Is that right? You're muted, Glenn. Glenn?
Sorry.
There you go.
I forget that I mute myself. Yes, their last plan set addressed my issue, so I had no outstanding issues.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Dennis?
Yes, sir. So I have comments. And I also have review comments for the septic plans that I did get directions from the planning board to review. So I'll, I guess I'll review the ones from the site plan first. This was a review that I sent in September 30th, so and they should have gotten to the, to the applicants. To, this is based on the plans that were submitted, 31 sheet plan set revised date was September 22nd. Also, I got a report from Mike Cuomo and a response letter from, from Doug McGuire. So so based on that, a lot of my previous comments were addressed. And so I'll just go over the ones that were not addressed and any additional comments. So number, my, my comment number two was that the plan now shows a 35-foot buffer, buffer around the onsite wetland resource area. Mr. Cuomo, certified soil scientist in his review states that a portion of the existing wetland has production export function, which counts as two points. And another portion of the existing wetland has segment retention function, another two points. It has always been my understanding that the points were added together to determine the required setback. Therefore, in this case, according to Article 2028 Table A, the required setback would be 45 feet for four points. My comment number 10, Article 4045G8, it says, provide a copy of the sanitary waste disposal plans for review. So I did get those and I did review those. I'll go over those comments in a minute. Number 12 was the site plan must comply with the fire department. And have, I don't, I don't know if the fire department has provided comments yet. So I left that, that that, that is one of my comments. Number 18 was that about landscaping, the response states that the waiver has been submitted but not acted upon. So that's something that the board may have to, to address. Number 20, state permits, the DOT, AMT permits are required. Also with greater than 25 people on site, the drinking water permit will be needed. Response states that the permits are in progress and I understand that you do have some, some of those receive that. So if, if you do, they have to be put on the plans. The 21 test bit data must be provided for review of the test bit, who logged them and who witnessed the work. The response states that the additional test bits will be conducted September 23rd. My comment number 25, will be prudent to provide documents to verify the proposed construction work on the abutting property is acceptable. And the response says that they're coordinating with that easement and Doug says that you did get that. So that's, that's a good thing. Get behind you. So my comment number 36 from before was the long-term operation and maintenance procedures document must be recorded in the registry deeds. And the response states that the applicant will re-record the document. Comment number 37 was stormwater measurements must meet the best management practices set forth in the DES stormwater management manual. Please provide the DMP worksheets for each stormwater practice. They have been provided. It says check and check, check areas to infiltration pond P2. In the case that value was set at three inches, not point three. Worksheets have been provided and the DES worksheets for the infiltration pond P2 and the area draining to the practice is 5.9 acres. HydroCAD calculations show 8.83 acres. So the worksheet must be revised accordingly. A couple of additional comments, detail on sheet 23 for the, I had put down five, but it's actually sheet 23 for the outlet control structure. One shows graphically, it shows the 2.5 invert outlet at the invert of the 18-inch culvert. It's supposed to be higher so to minimize confusion for the installer to show that being a foot higher as, as required by the calculations. Just wouldn't want that to be confused, confusion for when, when the contract is out there building it. Next comment was the plan must show dimensions for the outlet spillway of the infiltration pond P2. And I, and I, I'm not sure, but that may have already been done, but just check that again anyways to be sure that, that the dimensions and the elevations are on the plan. And my last comment was calculations for the detention basin P3 show device two as 3.5 inch primary culvert when the and then it shows the defense, device three as four inch vertical orifice that outlets to device two. So take a look at that and revise and also show the detail for it on the plans. So those are my comments for the site plan. If you want, I'll quickly go through the septic comments. Sure, I have. And if, and if you haven't got this, Doug, I'm sure you'll get this because I didn't get authorization to do this until last week. Just got it done, sent it into the board for the board members to review yesterday. So sure they'll get you a copy. So, so there were two septic plans and so the sanitary waste disposal system plan for building one and two. Number one, the title sheet should identify which system the plan is for on the lot, like says system A or system one or front system or what, however you want to label them, but the plan should show which, which one, which one it's for. Number two, I suggest showing the buildings on the, on the lot plan. At the top of the page, you show the whole property. It'd be nice to just show the buildings on there just to, just to give people an idea of where the buildings are on the lot on the septic plans because whoever's getting the septic plans may not be getting site plans. So to look at. Plan and profile show the bottom enviro septic pipe to be corrected elevation 239.53, but the design intent state said is to be 203. So you need to change the design intent. So that just there's some when you show elevations in two spots, they have to be the same, but I can understand, I've done this myself, that sometimes you don't, don't get them the same. Also, the original grade for the high contour is shown to be corrected elevation 232, but the design intent says 205. So again, change that. Septic tank, debox and rises must be labeled to withstand each 20 loading because they're all in the parking areas. Number six, the soil test pits must be witnessed by the town agent and the plan should state who logged the test pits. And I, you said you did, so it just needs to be, make sure it's on the plan. Number seven, the building two, move the text for the septic tank so it isn't cut off. You'll see that, that text is, is, goes into the tile block a little bit. Number eight, design note, note eight, number eight, show the town requirements 100 feet to well and surface water, 20 feet to the property line. So you need to notes that it says the minimum setbacks to the well and, and surface water and property lines. Just should show that they meet the town requirements and on, on that system they do. So go on to the septic design for building number three. Similar title sheet should show which system it's for, possibly system B. I suggest showing the buildings on the lot plan, same as the other one. Again, for the next two, the, the pipe inverts on the plan are correct, but on the design intent, they don't match. So check those out on three and four. Number five, again about the tank, debox and rises. I, I, I'm not sure they're going to be driving over those because it's behind the building. But if there's any chance that somebody could be driving over those, it should be each 20 rated. And number six, again, test pits show who, who logged them and who witnessed them for the town. And my last comment is Kingston requirements for septic systems, Article 1301.2 definitions. J, definition number J, it says sewage disposal systems shall mean any septic tank, leach field, dry well and any pipes, conduits or other equipment. So that's under the definition of what a sewage disposal system is. And under the 13016B2, it says septic tanks must, must be must have 100 feet for service disposal systems, which means that the septic tank has to be 100 feet from the edge of wetlands or submit a waiver to that requirement if you can't move it. But I think you can move it, move the septic system to make sure it meets the requirement because the definition says that septic tank is part of the disposal service disposal system. And so if it is, then the tank has to be 100 feet instead of, I think it's 75 or 50, whatever you show it. So those are my comments. I think that, like you say, they're, they're easy to fix. Send them in, we'll check them off and then you can get it. The state's pretty good about getting these turned away, turned around within, within a few days, a lot of times. Just hope that's helpful and that way there it'll get done even quicker. So those are my comments for now. Those are my comments for now.
Okay, Doug, before you, before you chime in, Dennis, can I go back to your previous comment sheet, item number two, where you talk about points value for the wetland and you were talking about a setback should be forty-five feet instead of thirty-five, that's how I read it?
Yeah, it's my understanding, we've always looked at the, the chart that, that has the wetland buffer determination table two oh two Table A. And it has the point systems and, and I, I've never seen them broken up like that, it's always I've always seen them to, to meet the requirements and then whatever the points add up to be for what that wetland resource is. And, and, and then the value underneath that points. I've, I've never seen a section of a wetland say it's one function and that holds that distance and another section of the wetland as another or, or another setback, a different setback requiring a, a different setback. I've always added, I've always seen the town require that they all, they add up the points and then what's, what's the, the sum equal what the setback has to be. That's the way I've always interpreted, that's all, that, that's the way I've always had, thought that the town interpreted that, that regulation too, not section, not sectioned out.
Glenn, is that your understanding, because I believe that that's my understanding too, but Glenn, Glenn, you have to unmute.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I have to condition my response on what Mike Cuomo has said in his letter. And in his letter of August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty, he says that he and Mr. Hurley looked at the, the wetland system on site. And they, they, between the two of them bifurcated well. And in that respect, they determined that one portion of the wetland and it's italicized in the letter. And for two, for two-thirds of the wetland. And that being that part of the wetland, that is a man-made portion of the wetland. It performs one kind of function. And that the second kind, which is the naturally performing, I mean, the naturally created well and it did primarily a different function. And that's why his letter indicates that there are, are, the wetland is looked at in two different ways. The end result being a thirty-five-foot buffer for the entire wetland area. And that's unusual, I, I admit.
Okay. Yeah, Doug.
So, Mr. Chair, I just, I want to, I want to just provide my feedback on that because I'm hearing it from Luke Hurley's side as well, and actually Glenn was able to, in my opinion, shed some light on that situation. The, because what we have to recall is that originally Mr. Hurley had this as a one-point valued system. And being a twenty-five point, or twenty-five-foot setback. And so when they were out there, there was some discussion as to whether or not that, I guess, when they, when they evaluated it in those two sections, and they did that mainly because there was some creation wetland area and some naturally occurring wetland, and they were performing very different functions and not the same functions, and so that's why they broke it that way. But what they were originally going to do and what Luke was, was pushing for was that the, the original portion of the wetland seemed to have a little bit more value than the upward portion because of, I guess, some depth and some ability to hold floodwater. So he was going to say, well, you know, we could recognize that that portion of the wetland would potentially be higher value, pushing it to thirty-five-foot setback with the remaining piece being only twenty-five. Ultimately, through their discussion, they said, okay, well, Mike said, yes, I, I see what you're saying, this does not have the same value as that. But that there was, I guess, some filtration potential in that other piece, so essentially they both reflected a two-point system. And that's why they did it the way they did. I, I think to me it makes sense in this regard because you essentially are being, you're looking at the process relatively conservatively because one section of the wetland was borderline one point, of which we're accounting for it as two. So effectively, we're kind of saying, okay, well, if it has two, let's keep that, the thirty-five all the way around. But I don't think it would be reasonable to compo-compound those because that, that wasn't the intent in how they were pointing the system. As, as, as Glenn stated, the, the letter actually calls out that the buffer would be thirty-five feet for the well as a whole. So I think that was the intent and that's why we adjusted that as we did, and then as I said, I mean, there was some relatively substantial redesign of the drainage system and the building, which we had to do to accommodate that, so I'm hoping that, you know, that we can stick with what the recommendation of RCCD was, which was the thirty-five.
Before I go on to department comments, I want to see if if the board is comfortable with, with that, with that determination and explanation from Glenn and from RCCD and what Doug said.
I would be comfortable because it came from RCCD as well. So I'm coming with thirty-five-foot setback.
I agree, I'm comfortable with it too.
Okay, Chris gives a thumbs up. Lynn thumbs up. Robin shaking her head, yes, it looks like. Okay, Peter Coffin?
Yeah, I'm thinking that whatever Dennis and Rich were both around when this original mitigation was done, and I'm not really that familiar with it, so I'm, I'm comfortable with what a recommendation from Dennis would be as far as what's required, so.
Dennis's recommendation is different though than what
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think there was some, some factors that had to do with the alteration since that the, the original seventy-five-foot setbacks were put in and, and that devalued that, and, and I'm I'm wondering if there should be some rest, wetland restoration, apparently that, according to Glenn.
I just want to say my comments were, were, were such that, you know, I've always seen them, points added together. I, 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 I do understand whether soil scientists, when they are debating back and forth, they're experts, they were there. If the board feels as though that that's acceptable, then, then, then by all means, it's, it's new to me. I'll certainly have to look at things in the future a little bit differently. And, and how they're, how they're proposed to the board, because if that's the way the interpretation of the board's going to be in the future, I'll just have to keep that in mind for anything else that comes, comes, comes to the town.
Ellen? Well, I just want to be clear that this seems to me that this is an unusual circumstance based on partial natural wetland and partial man-made wetland. And I don't want Dennis going off thinking that the board now wouldn't want the numbers added up as they normally would be, because that has been how the board has done it in the past. This just is an unusual circumstance that the two wetland scientists came to some sort of agreement and conclusion based on the unusual nature of it. Not that we're changing what the board would normally do for a recommendation for wetland setback.
Right. I think a lot of the time, when, when we have a plan coming in like this, we always refer to have Mike or someone, RCCD review the, the wetland stuff anyway, so. You know, I, it's just new to me, that's all. And, and I agree, Ellen, this is an unusual situation. And it is just that it may come up again in the future, that's all. But, but Dennis.
I think it's clear they've added the two points each to the two different areas of the pond, so that's why the thirty-five foot, I, I'm comfortable with that. But that's what Mike Cuomo came up with.
And, and, and Dennis, you're correct as well that in, in normal circumstances, those, those you know, each of those values that are determined by the wetland scientist have points associated with them and those are additive. And it's, those, once they get added up, that determines the, that determines the setback. So, in, in normal circumstances, that is the way it happens.
Should there be some sort of acknowledgement of that in any potential approval so that it doesn't become precedent moving forward?
Would take a change in what you have for your regulations.
Right, so I'm just wondering if we sort of acknowledge it as a
I, I would, I would say, Robin, that as long as Ellen reflects the fact that what we're dealing with here is this bifurcated wetland that has half man-made and half natural, and the features that they bring to that are really different in, in how they, in how the wetland areas act. If you look at our ordinance, I think as long as we reflect that in the, in the minutes, we're protected from this being a precedent kind of thing.
I think we're looking at as two separate wetlands, basically.
Yeah, that's, that's what they basically agreed to was that the larger portions of the wetland got broken into two different, two different ways of being viewed because of the way they were created. And in a weird turn of events, the functions that they performed were different, and that doesn't usually happen with a wetland.
Right. Robin, does that answer, is that satisfactory?
It does, yeah, it was just a, a general question.
Okay, well, I, as Glenn said, I think that as long as the minutes reflect accurately why, why it's being done this way this particular time and that it is a, an aberration from our norm, that, that, that should, that should cover it. Okay, um, let's see, we have a couple of town department comments. Health department has indicated that there's no septic design in the plans. That's, that's the comment from the health department.
I think that's because Dennis was doing the review.
Right.
Of that.
Okay. And the other one is from a building inspector. And he says, still have concerns about driveway slopes and easement for cell tower access. Well, we've already addressed the easement, we know we have that wording, I do have a question though about the easements. It appears that there are two, one was a construction easement and one was a more of permanent easement. So it kind of covers the, the pre and post-development phases of the project. Now, normally we have legal documents reviewed by town council, Glenn, are we doing that for the easements?
That's a, that's a board decision, I mean, generally the board does have legal review of instruments provided to it.
What's the, what, what, Doug?
I, I would just, I would just say, Mr. Chair, that in this case, the, the lion's share of that, of that document was the back and forth between Comcast and Mr. Wilder in protecting their interests with regards to the fact that they're allowing him to access legally across the property. It's been vetted by Mr. Wilder's attorney and Comcast's attorney, and then it went to another layer of Comcast attorneys that then review it, so I, I don't see a lot of necessarily benefit in, in wasting the town's resources on that, but if there was a particular concern that I'm not aware of, you know, it's still obviously your direction, but I would just, I would just say that this wasn't something that was concocted by, you know, the two homeowners that wouldn't necessarily have legal binding or something like that, this was in the case of that, you know, several attorneys were going back and forth this for about two and a half months, so.
I, I understood, understood, but it, but it is, it is the board's practice to, to have any legal instruments that are going to be part of any site plan or subdivision to have a, to have it reviewed by town council, but that's, as Glenn said, that's a board call, so.
I, I would certainly move in favor of that. I don't know if you noticed it, but for example, there was nothing in the easement granting permission for the applicant to put a sign on their property, on Comcast's property. I need the reason.
Any other thoughts from the board on this?
I think if they do not have an easement for a sign, then they're going to have, that's.
I mean, that can be an addendum later on before they go for the sign permit, so.
Or, or it could be that Comcast didn't want them to put a sign there. So they can't, I mean.
We don't know.
I guess my thought is, if we get one more attorney involved in this and he disagrees, now we've got to go get another half a dozen attorneys involved again. I just.
Well, and I think, I think that was the issue that Doug was trying to raise, but Ellen?
Exactly.
I think all our, going to do though is make sure there's nothing in it that's going to bother the town. Not whether or not it's good for Comcast or good for Mr. Wilder, it's just going to make sure there's nothing in it that somehow could put the town in any form of risk. So I don't think it's probably going to be subject to something that's going to make attorneys crazy unless there's some weird thing in it that would impact the town.
Any other board members want to weigh in on this one? Glenn, do you have a recommendation?
I mean, it's our standard, it's our standard course of action to do it. I'm sure that Sumner could turn it around very quickly.
Plus, I don't think it would have to delay anything.
All right, to move this along, I'm going to make a motion that we send the, the easements for just a, a quick review by town council.
I thought Peter had done that.
I'm sorry, oh, did he?
I, I said I would be willing to do that, so I'll make that a motion if you haven't, or I'll second yours. Why don't I just second yours?
All right, all right. Motion by me, second by Peter Coffin, discussion. Ellen, would you please call the roll?
Glenn Copeland?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Peter Baiki? Did anyone hear that?
Peter?
Unanimous.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Yep, got it.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
And Robin DuGuey?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous, and so if Glenn or Ellen, I'm not sure who, but if someone could get those over to Sumner for a quick turnaround, that would be very helpful. Okay. Okay. So the only other town department I have is a written correspondence, and I can't remember if I read this one at the last hearing, and that was from Conservation Commission. Does anybody recall if I did? Because it looks very familiar, but then again.
I believe you did, Mr. Chair, yes.
Okay. So I know we have, we have the Chair of Conservation with us, so Evy, if you have further comment, now would be a good time.
Yes, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to mention that the wetland that's under discussion was destroyed many years ago and in two fifteen was restored. So it, it's being called a man-made wetland or part of it, but it's a restored wetland and at that time seventy-five feet was the buffer that was determined to be necessary. I feel that by lowering the, the, the points of this buffer again and again, we're bringing it back to being destroyed and not being very helpful, there were no points given for wildlife habitat, which I know that it has, it's on the top of a hill and I've witnessed animals going to the wetland. So I hate to see the wetland sectioned in the way that it has been in order to lose points. I, I know that that wasn't the intention of RCCD, but I, I know that that wasn't the intention of our CCD, but, um. It was a restored wetland not very long ago, and I feel like it should be, if anything, it should be. Worked on again, uh, to be made more viable rather than. Made smaller. The other comment I had was that at our meeting, uh, Chief Briggs had some concerns that. Uh, one twenty-five is going to be widened and he had concerns of runoff down the hill. From this project and wondered if DOT should be notified. I'm not sure if they have or not. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Evy. Uh, Doug, you, DOT is notified, right? I mean.
Oh, absolutely, yes, uh, DOT has a. Uh, thi- this requires a DOT driveway permit, and that's a permit that we have filed, uh, we filed that actually back in August. Uh, we've been coordinating with District Six. Uh, we prepared a traffic memorandum, uh, as part of that to submit to them. We, we include our entire drainage report and study, uh, as far as that goes, so that they, they too can. Review the drainage and our, you'll note on our plans that we're actually. Accommodating our access to include the potential expansion and widening that they are proposing within the corridor, so. Yes, we're certainly working with DOT on that and, uh, a- and so that, yes, that, that is a factor.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, Ellen?
I, I have a question because I, I don't know if I, you know, blacked out at some point or missed it. But has, has people actually talked about the entrance of this property onto one twenty-five? And how that's going to work and. Uh, how the driveway is going to look for slope. From the site onto one twenty-five. I know that they've applied for the driveway permit. But, um, they do also need a driveway permit for the town of Kingston and, and I just don't remember that. Having a lot of discussion and that for me is more of the issue on that site. And the large trucks that are going to be accessing it than a lot of the other topics.
So, uh, it was certainly, it doesn't, I don't think you blacked out, Ellen, I think, uh, it's just. We've done enough meetings on this that we've had some separation from our initial, uh, our initial meetings, um. During actually one of our first hearings that we had on this, there was discussion about the access and what we were doing to improve the access. And, you know, just to reiterate a few of the points on that, uh, there's several items that we're doing to. Improve upon this existing access. Um, number one, we, we are actually, we're actually bumping out the access drive. Up into the hill of Comcast, that's why there's a substantial, uh, level of contemporary construction easement that you touched on, Mr. Chair. Uh, because we need to be able to carry that slope back to provide a more perpendicular access. To, uh, to the main road. We also are reducing the grade, the existing grade of the drive access is upwards of sixteen percent. So not only are we improving the, the access as to how it attack, it, how it comes to. Uh, the main road, but we're also reducing the grade down to a much more reasonable percentage of. You know, under nine percent, uh, and we also are creating a. An area that is actually sloping away from the. From the road, that's a requirement of DOT, they want to see their drainage runoff come off the edge of the road, not be directed onto the road. So we do have a low point created, so that will also assist with. You know, potential of, of a vehicle being able to come to a stop because it is tilted away from the, from the road. These are all items that, that, you know, we can accommodate, uh, and really it was, it was a balancing act between. Maximizing the access way to have the most perpendicular access we could with the, with appropriate radii in and out. We did do truck turn templates, uh, on the road, that was included with the DOT submission. And that shows that a large tractor trailer truck cannot be accommodated to enter, exit the site in both directions. So that was something that we included as well, so, um, maybe we didn't talk about it as much as we should have, only because it just wasn't. Uh, it wasn't a hot button item that the board was bringing up, but we certainly were looking at that from our standpoint from the very beginning. And, uh, you know, and working to accommodate those, those concerns, so.
Peter Coffin?
Yeah, um, you said that the final slope is going to be less than nine degrees, and what was the fire department's maximum?
My, my understanding is ten, so we were, you know, we were under nine, uh, which I thought we were doing, uh. We were doing, you know, better than what they'd be looking for, so.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, because I saw, um, ironically, Robert Stewart's comments on Department head comments was that. He had still had concerns about the driveway slope, but we didn't have anything from the fire department. I think Glenn had said that at the beginning that. There's no comment from fire, and usually they, they weigh in on driveways. That, so.
No, no, no comment from fire.
But it, it is within their, um. Slope requirements, is that correct?
Well, Doug, that's what Doug is saying.
Well, and I think, I think what's important to note too is, uh, a- as I assumed it would be a, a hot button issue, and maybe it wasn't quite as. As much as, uh, I expected a- a- as, as to have comments about this, but. That was one of the main focuses of what we did when we designed this site is you'll note that we have, you know, two hundred foot center line radii. We have a hundred foot radii coming to the entrance to the stopping condition, so. You know, typically, if this were a lesser driveway or a lesser use that wouldn't have the truck traffic that is potentially anticipated here. We would easily do that as a fifty foot center line radius or seventy-five, uh, you know, the fact that we were able to. Uh, accommodate a hundred foot radii, which, by the way, is, is that a relatively substantial cost to Mr. Wilder because. The, if we were able to follow the existing access. That would work a lot better because he could actually hold that, but we're actually completely going past the existing access. And cutting into the slope to accommodate the, uh, this radii, so. Um, y- you know, I, I think it's, I think it's a, a safe condition, as I said, we ran the truck turning templates. Um, this isn't going to be a heavy traffic use, uh, it just isn't, it's not, it's not like this is a, a shopping plaza or anything like that, it's going to be for individual contractors. Uh, and, and, you know, their equipment needs, so I, I, I think what we have proposed is, is certainly reasonable.
You said the state's weighted against their widening plans, is that correct?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The state, the state has weighed in on the, uh, uh, on the proposal.
Yes, yeah.
Their widening plans.
Yes, we, we, we're showing actually their DOT plans within our plan set. So we're accommodating our drive access connections to that widening. Now, obviously. If the widening has not occurred yet, what, what the goal will do, and this will be coordinated obviously directly with DOT and their driveway permit. But we will hold all the same assumptions. Of which would accommodate that improvement, but then we would just extend to the existing drive until which time the improvement is widened, so. Um, so it's not a matter of something that would have to be adjusted later, they would, they would adjust to us because we would be designed to their finalized design.
Are you aware that they're having, I think like the last, it's either the last public hearing or the last pre-public hearing, like the end of this month?
It, it's on the twenty-nine, on the twenty-ninth at six o'clock. Um, and I believe it's set up for Zoom, is that right, Ellen?
I think so, I'd have to double, I think so.
I think it is.
The good, I, I wasn't aware of that, Ellen, but the good news is, is that. I'm working directly with the District Six engineer, so he's giving me their latest and greatest iterations and at, you know, and providing me with what he wants to see. Uh, you know, you'll see that the, we have the road, the road center line is the DOT center line shown. Uh, that's for, that's based on all their design plans, so our design plans are matching with their design plans, which is. You know, one of the comments that they had and wanted to make sure that we did, so that's, that's why that's reflected.
And, uh, are they telling you when they expect to approve the driveway?
With regards to our driveway or the expansion?
No, no, the, you said DOT is, Division Six, you're working with them to get the driveway permit?
They had, they had some, a comment, uh, uh, unfortunately, D- DOT, uh, moves at a snail's pace when it comes to reviews, that's a. A well-known item, uh, and as I said, we submitted our application to them in August. Uh, but we did receive comments in late, uh, late September. Which they were asking, some of the similar items that you folks were asking for, such as, hey, uh, do we have a driveway easement in place, which we did not at the time? Uh, all of that's been supplied to them, so. I've been told by the District Six engineer that he is reviewing that with his superior, be expecting a response. Any day, so yes, uh, he hasn't given me an exact time, but he does expect that we would be receiving something very shortly.
Other questions from the board? Richard?
Yes. Just a comment from the selectman. Um, there is a cease and desist currently on this property. They were asked a couple of months ago if the work could start preliminary to this approval and they were told no. But yet dump trucks have been going in and out of the. The, uh, site dumping material. Can you explain why this is happening when there's a cease and desist on it? There's also a tremendous amount of dirt on one twenty-five from this activity on the rainy days.
Okay, can I explain something here?
Mr. Wilder, sure.
Yep, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so we sent, uh, uh, the drill, a drill rig up there for the well. And the well is set on the side of a hill, so we had to make a flat platform for him, because he almost flipped his truck over. We took a few loads of dirt. Up there to make him a flat platform. And he's done drilling the well now, the well's in, so you won't see any more of that until, you know, we get approved. But we had to, we, we had to make him a platform.
I've seen dump trucks myself going in there a couple of weeks apart and one was witnessed last week. Going in and out of there, so it's been more than, you know, it's been a pretty far out spanned of time that this has happened.
It, it's, that material is just on the hillside in one area, so it's, it's done now.
I can't hear him.
Oh, Mr. Wilder, you, you faded out there, we didn't catch.
I'm sorry, well, well, that activity is done now anyway, I did have to make him a platform, I didn't make it all at once because I. We, we just, we, we made a small area farm, wasn't, wasn't large enough, we added to it, so. I mean. I, I needed to get the well in so we can get the water tested.
So you're not stockpiling material up there like you asked to do?
No, I would like to, but we, uh, um, I'm waiting. There's no equipment up there.
Okay, so it's the applicant's testimony that he's, he's not doing site work up there with the exception of. The work that he needed to do to get the well. Richard, if you find out anything differently, you'll, uh, you'll let us know.
Well, I was told I should go check it out, but I didn't want to trespass, so.
Well, maybe, maybe Mr. Wilder could give you permission. Or maybe not.
Are, are we, I guess, I guess the question is, is, um. You know, I mean, a- at, at this, at this stage, I think we're, we're finally there, I don't know if, uh. The board is, is, is comfortable moving this project forward, I mean. Um, you know, to a conditional approval, the, uh, I, I can tell you that the, the comments that Dennis went through. Number one, I actually greatly appreciate the comments on the septics. Uh, Dennis knows probably just as well as I do that. Even one of those tiny typo mistakes will, um, will reject it at the state level, which. Is, is more, i- it's, it's not a big deal, but it's a pain in the butt, and so those catches that he found will. Help me to get this one and done and, and as he said, we'll have those permits. Within a day or two of us submitting them to the state, so. Um, you know, with the main, the big, the big pieces in place, the easement, the alteration of terrain permit. Um, the water supply permit, uh, is approved a- and, and now just needs to be completed with the testing. But the location and everything was all approved, so I mean, those are the big, big ticket button ones and. Obviously, any approval would be conditioned on all remaining permits, so, uh, to me, I, I, I just think. You know, this board has seen this plan for upwards of almost a year now, um, and. I'm hoping that we can move this forward.
What about Dennis's comment regarding, um, the fact that you've indicated that a waiver has been granted for landscaping and, uh. But the board hasn't acted on it yet.
Yeah, uh, that's, that's a good point, um. This is probably an Ellen question, uh, because I know. She takes the minutes, but I, I thought that we had acted on that, but if we didn't, I know we discussed it and basically said, okay, yes. You were in favor and, and the, and the crux of, of that request. Uh, was, a- and Ellen, and actually, before I get into that, correct me if I'm wrong, but. I thought that we had submitted that a- at the last hearing and you had said, oh, no, I don't have a record of it, and I ended up emailing it to you. During the hearing, so that you had a copy.
About, about.
Uh, um. I, I want to say it was in earlier September.
Okay, let me just, let me look at the minutes.
Because I know, I know that, um, I know that we submitted it and I, I thought that the board acted on that waiver at the time because it was really.
If you know the date you submitted it to me by email, I'm just going to look at those minutes.
Okay, let me, I'll look it up right now.
I think it's September first. Couldn't have been. The early September ones, you asked for continuance. So wouldn't have been then, um.
Uh, it was on the eighteenth, Ellen.
August eighteen.
August?
August eighteen.
Okay, give me a sec.
Was that for the reclaimed asphalt?
No, no, that, that one we acted on, I think, back in June or July, actually.
I have that on the eighteenth of August.
You have for the reclaim?
Yeah. Maybe, maybe it was just that it was all set, but I don't see anything about landscaping.
My notes, my notes on the August eighteenth agenda. Indicate that there were two waivers discussed, one was for the landscaping, one was for the reclaimed asphalt and my. I have a check mark beside the reclaimed asphalt, not the landscape.
Yeah.
So that, that's consistent with what you were saying, Robin?
Yeah. But I'll defer to Ellen's.
Do you have the minutes? Are you looking at the minutes?
No, I'm looking at my own personal notes on the agenda from that date.
Okay. Uh, I thought they would just pop up, give me a second.
But it, but it was the August eighteenth and it was the second, second hearing of the night.
It's deciding to open and taking its time. Okay, let this state feel still. Fieldstone. I do not have that as a motion that night.
Would, would, Mr. Chair, would you like?
It's not as a motion on the eighteenth.
If it wasn't done on the eighteenth, I, I, maybe it was just tabled to the next hearing, uh, I, I know that. I, I know that, uh, the board didn't have any particular issue with it, would it help if I read the request? I know it's been submitted. For the record.
Yes, please.
So my, my request states, uh, it's actually, it's actually, uh, dated June thirtieth, but. So it states, uh, we respectfully request a waiver of Article nine oh four point one five point B, point ten. Of the Site Plan Review Regulations to allow for minimized landscaped areas along the outside of the parking areas. of the Site Plan Review Regulations to allow for minimized landscaped areas along the outside of the parking areas. The intended use of this site does not require increased curb appeal to encourage customer visitation and the site itself is set far back enough from the roadway that there doesn't seem to be a need for additional landscaped areas around the parking exterior.
I, I actually remember that being read. I don't know if we ever voted on it, but I definitely remember that.
I vaguely remember that as well. I, I, I mean, Ellen doesn't have it in the minutes and my own personal notes indicate that we, that we did not take a motion on that.
I have the waiver request sent on that date, but the minutes do not reflect the board voting on it. So I do have the paperwork for the, for the file that was just read, but it's, it's not reflected any vote in the minutes.
Probably take, take this up now.
Is the, is the pardon, what did you say, Peter?
I'm saying we could probably take this up now just instead of rehashing this.
Well, yes, yes. Oh, I was about ready to ask, is, is the, is the, is the board prepared to take this up at this point? And if so, please do it by motion.
Make a motion, we grant the waiver.
Second.
All right, motion by Richard, second by Chris. I assume, Richard, you, you were meaning to say that you're, you're.
Yes, I was.
To grant the waiver as, as
As written.
As read by the applicant and with the justification provided by the applicant?
Sounds good.
I thought so. Further discussion. All right, Ellen, would you please call the roll for this one?
Okay, it was Richard and who seconded it?
Chris Bashaw.
Thank you.
For, and it's for granting a waiver to Article 904.15.B.10 landscaping. I assume that's under Site Plan Review regs?
Are you ready for the vote or are you having discussion?
No, I asked you to call the roll, please.
Okay. Glenn Koppelman?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Peter Baiki?
Yes.
Robin DeGuey?
Yes.
Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Oh, Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's unanimous. All right, so that's, that's taken care of. All right, so what's, what is the, what is the board's pleasure at this point? You have.
I have a question first. Do we even know if a driveway permit application has been made to the town?
No, we have not made a driveway application to the town. My, my understanding is that would typically be pulled by the contractor once you have your approved plan and is that not how you typically do it in town or?
Contractors typically pull those permits.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Or don't.
But you already.
In this, in this case, we have a DOT driveway permit. They may defer to DOT on that anyway. Just being embedded to DOT maintained access.
Apparently they'll only, they will still want you to have a driveway permit for anything past a certain footage from the highway because that's all the state cares about. The town's going to care about the rest of it. So you might want to make sure that that is the fire department's number and everything. You know.
Well, I mean, with, with all due respect, the, the fire department has been asked for comment on this for over a year. I don't think they have any issues with it. I know they've received the plans.
I don't care.
Yeah, that's fine.
My personal opinion is that since you're still in the process of getting a driveway permit onto Route 125, which is a very busy highway in Kingston, that you might want to make sure that they don't have any significant changes that would then be part of the approval process, which would then make you have to start over again. So I just think that the better part of valor is to just continue this till you get your driveway permit. But that's just, I just think it protects your interests, but.
Yeah, I, well, it's, well, it's up to the board, but it's also really up to the applicant because at least that part of it, because Ellen's absolutely right. If the, you know, if there's an outstanding item that, that could potentially require redesign and you get conditional approval based on what you've submitted, you would then have to start again and come back in again. So it's something for you to think about.
Well, I feel, I feel very confident with my, my discussions that I've had with District Six thus far that that, you know, there's not going to be any substantial changes. I would, I would guess that at least in my experience with other communities, if there were for some unforeseen change that would, you know, in Glenn's eyes would be deemed substantial, that would require board input, a lot of times we'd be able to come back with a noticed hearing just to look at that piece, not necessarily reapply an entire, you know, like a site plan fully again, because obviously we would only be looking at, like, let's say, for example, the DOT says, hey, we'd like that platform to be 30 feet. If that's deemed to be an issue big enough that requires review or planning board input, I would think that we would be able to come back for that piece. What I'm trying to do is, is just, is just, you know, not prolong this process with the board and taking up your time any further with continued hearings. Obviously, the quicker we can get these permits in, we may be able to get the DOT DOT permit in within this week. So if that were to happen with a conditional approval tonight, then we could show, you know, obviously supply those permits to Glenn and he can do his final review with Dennis and we could be off, off to go or with, with, you know, final board signing of the plans. So, you know, that's the thought.
I just pray to you because if you say in a week they do have to change it and you do have to come back to the board, then you're going to have to put in for at least a hearing and you're going to have to send it to a butters, which you take the chance of just continuing to November and if you get everything you need, then you're all set in November. But if they change it, you're not going to be in until the minimum December now. So that's going to automatically put you off a month instead of just holding your space for November to confirm that you get your DOT stuff. So I'm just telling you, you could take the chance and be clear and know you're in in November or if anything changes, you're, you're put yourself off at least another month. So that, that's, I just want to bring that to your attention.
No, that's, that's a fair, fair, you know, to bring that forward. John, what's your take on that? I mean, I feel comfortable with where we're at with DOT, but ultimately that would be your decision.
Well, I don't see how they're going to change it much anyway because we're, we're.
Well, it's not a point of much, how much, it's if it, if it changes from the plans that are in the plan set that if that were the approval, anything that changes from that, if it's different than what's on the plan, would require you coming back for an amended site plan.
Okay, so what are you talking, a couple of weeks that we get back into the, to the planning board?
Yeah, it would be.
It would be the November hearing date on the 20th, I think.
The 17th.
17th.
I thought, I thought you just described that meeting was heavily packed. It was maybe a pretty late night. Are you recommending another hearing this same night?
Well, it was, the, the comment that Ellen made was that, that it was going to be packed because if there was a possibility of this one being continued to that night, there was also other stuff on there. So it was sort of, that was sort of built into the whole packed nature of it.
Oh, I thought, I thought the saddle came up with that.
No, I, I would think that if the board has no other issues, it would simply be the driveway. In which case, it doesn't appear to me that this hearing would take very long.
Right.
It just would take.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't just, it would also involve having the final sign off on Dennis's comments and on the legal instrument and the DOT permit.
Well, and I, and I think to that point, Glenn, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but we fully recognize that we need to get your and Dennis's final sign offs as a condition of the approval. My guess is, is that, let's say something, for example, let's say DOT says, hey, can you add a double yellow stripe to the driveway entrance? Now, to me, that certainly wouldn't require returning to the board, even though that is technically a planned change. I would say though, that it would certainly require your and Dennis's review to be sure that that, something, something of that nature wouldn't require the board, a return to the board. And as long as we could have that level of latitude, I feel totally comfortable working with you, working with staff essentially and finalizing these plans.
Glenn? Some back, just as some background, I can tell you why we're so reluctant to do this as we had another project not that long ago that the DOT was taking forever for a driveway permit and it ended up never coming through. And so in, in that case, the applicant had decided to go with another set of plans to get a conditional approval for it, but we've, we've been there before and, and quite frankly, I'm perfectly willing to go ahead and do the conditional approval, but I'm not taking the risk.
Well, you're certain, you're, I mean, we would certainly be required to obtain a successful driveway permit that would be reflective of these plans. I mean, we know that and we can't move forward with a final approval, meaning a signed plan until we have that in hand. So, I mean, if that were to say never come, I don't, I don't, you know, this project just wouldn't essentially be moving forward. So I don't see that as a potential issue. Obviously, there is an unknown that they could come up with something. I mean, they haven't, as I said, I've already received initial comments from them and there wasn't anything like, hey, what are you doing? Try again on this driveway. There wasn't any comment like that. It was mainly focused on providing some access easements, making sure that they had everything to build a review and whatnot. So I don't anticipate there being a large issue, but I, I mean, to me, I think with a, with a packed hearing in November 16th, I would like John to be able to potentially start his construction before November 16th if possible, especially if we can get these permits in hand. So I know we can get the septic permits in hand as soon as I get that, that sign off from Dennis, which I'll work on this week. And as I said, I think we'll have DOT hopefully this week. So if that's the case, then it would, it would make sense to, to pursue a conditional approval tonight with the assumption that we might be able to get this project up and running sooner than later.
I think we just want you to say what you want done, not we think, we think, or this, we want you to make a commitment one way or the other, what you want to do.
It's, 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 it's what level of risk are you, are you willing to take? And if, if you're willing to, if you're comfortable that you're going to get what you've asked for from DOT and everything else is, is resolved. And you want us to do conditional approval, you can request that and we can take that up.
Yeah, I, 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 I think that, that would be, that would be what I would be requesting. As I said, I assume, I, I don't want to misspeak, but I did say like, you know, if DOT has a minor comment, I'm assuming that that could be worked through with staff, meaning, you know, something minor, not substantial, any type of development change, but something minor that could be reviewed by Dennis, which certainly could be a condition of the approval. But I mean, if you're, if you're saying that if they have even one comment that changes a note on the plan, I, I, I don't think I can commit to that. So that, that's, I guess, where I stand. I need a little feedback from the board on how you handle things. I know how they do it in other communities, but everybody's different, so.
Glenn, do you want to weigh in?
I got to say, you know, I'm not, I don't want to be the final say on a driveway permit, but if there is, if it's, if it's a minor thing that was not going to cause indigestion to the town road agent or the town engineer, then I think it's something that we could work through. But if it's, if it's more than that, then it's something that requires the, the approval of the planning board. I mean, Rich is, Rich now looks at driveway permits all driveways, whether they're on local roads or, or state roads. So if you came forward with something that was relatively minor and he was comfortable with that change, I certainly would speaking up in a different way. But this entire conversation is hypothetical.
You know, Doug, I, you know, from my own perspective, if, if it came down to a, you know, a request by DOT to do different, different striping lines on the, on the pavement, I, I can't see that as justifying a revised site plan, but if, if there are construction details, design details in the, in the, how that, how that thing enters onto the, onto the, onto Route 125, I, I mean, I think that takes it to a different level.
Mr. Chair, I, I think, I, I think I hear what staff in the board is saying and, and I can respect that, that you are trying to look out for the applicant's best interest here. So I guess I would request that we be continued. I think, you know, hopefully, hopefully there's no surprise additional, additional comments from, you know, a different review agency or something within the town. But I mean, assuming we're just talking about the driveway permit, we're almost there. I think it certainly does make sense. And, you know, if we get it sooner, then John just has to wait, you know, one more week or so and he can, I think he can do.
Can we maybe have a little latitude in where this comes on the agenda, although I know we're meeting last and we really would be last for the November meeting? But could we perhaps not be last on this one, on the November meeting?
Could consent their agenda?
Could we do it at 6:30?
You can do it at 6:45 and still be first. They're all 6:45.
Well, I know.
Sure, if you want to. There's no reason not to.
6:40.
Yeah, something, something like that because I think in the ensuing month, everything is going to get done. Unless that was the kiss of death right there.
Yeah, well, that, that did it, Glenn.
Don't say that.
Well, it's not, the board's not expecting any revised plans, so you're not going to even get department comments.
Right.
Right, right.
Make a motion that we continue this to November 17th at 6:40 PM.
Motion by Richard.
Second.
Second.
Second by everybody.
Who did, who did I hear the second from? I heard Robin, I think.
I was muted, but I said it.
But I heard somebody else. Oh, Lynn, maybe. Okay. Ellen, did you get somebody as a second?
Lynn.
Thank you. Discussion?
Oh.
All right, so with regard, we don't need to establish a time for a submittal of materials because there won't be new plans. Is that right, Doug?
There has to be some revisions.
Based on Dennis's comments. All right, so the motion needs to include a date for receipt of materials. Would that be the same as the, for the other hearing, November 5th?
Yep.
I guess it would be.
All right, so, so, so the motion includes a statement that, that any, any new materials need to be received by noon time November 5th at the Planning Board Office?
Yes.
And that go, the seconder was okay with that? Lynn?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right.
Can I ask, can I ask at this time if, based on the fact that it appears to be very limited in the boards that will need review, can we tell the applicant now how many large plans they're going to need? Does the board members need to review large plans or were they happy to have the applicant provide the smaller 11 by 17 plans for the board's review?
As far as I'm concerned, Dennis is the only one that need, maybe Glenn to review. You know, if they want to just provide plans for Dennis to review the changes he wanted. You know, if they want to just provide plans for Dennis to review the changes he wanted.
I, I'd be happy with an electronic version at this point.
Yeah, me too. Electronics fine.
Yep, same.
So we'll need, we'll need a large one.
Glenn and Dennis, I, you, you, do you
Yeah, I need paper ones and I need them big. I'm sorry.
Dennis, you as well?
I, I prefer the big ones. I mean, I, I do get some of the stuff on the computer. I just have to plot it out myself, which I, I don't mind doing. It's just more time for me.
Yeah, right. So Doug, if it looks like a couple of, couple of full sets?
The Planning Board Office needs one for the files.
So three?
Yes, I leave it to Dennis and Glenn to determine. I don't think it sounds like anyone else needs to do review. So why don't you give me three large plants and two of the small ones, just so I can have them for the public in case we're asked.
That's not a problem at all. A lot easier than 20 bigs, that's for sure.
Exactly.
So thank you.
And, and obviously, the electronic version for the board members, but also for the website.
Yep, absolutely.
So Glenn, you can take a look at which plans are going to get recorded and which ones are going to be saved. Yeah, okay, thanks.
All right, further discussion. All right, Ellen, can we call the roll for this one, please?
Sure. Glenn Koppelman?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Robin DeGueye?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
Peter Baiki?
Yes.
And Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that's unanimous. And I, I apologize, I forgot to ask for public comment. Hopefully, there was nobody out there waiting to say something. Okay, all right. Okay, guys, thanks. We'll see you, see you next month and hopefully wrap this up.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Mr. Wilder.
Hey, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, for the board, we took care of the minutes before this, before the hearings started. I don't think I have any correspondence critical, Ellen, do we?
No.
Okay. Any other business to come before the board? Glenn, anything for us?
I have nothing.
Board members, anything? All right, there being no indication, then we'll call this meeting adjourned at 10:05 PM. Thank you all. See you next time.